Okay, good evening, everyone. We are going to start the meeting up. This is the July 10th, 2025 Town Official Planning Board Meeting, and we'll call the meeting's order at about 7:03 PM. And would you all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the law for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome, everybody. Hope you're enjoying the nice, warm summer that we're having. So as I always start off, please silence your cellphones, just so it won't disturb people in the room, and speak clearly into the microphone as I'm testing mine now. I think it's working okay. Can you hear? All right?
It sounds good.
All right, so it turns out we have all seven voting members tonight, so we're in good shape with that. We have one major agenda change. The proposed Fishkill Commerce Center review and discussion is adjourned to the August 14th, 2025 meeting at the applicant's request, and they submitted a letter to that effect requesting that adjournment. We actually only received it earlier this afternoon, so, but there it is. And then also a quick note, at the end of tonight's meeting, we will have a closed session in which the board will seek advice of the planning board attorney. All right, I was just testing the microphone before. Is that better? Would you like me to speak even louder? It's gonna be, I can't actually speak like this during the whole meeting, so if I can get it close to my mouth, I will try, but that's what I was trying to tell everyone else to do, too. They were just announcements. Okay, so we've got two public hearings tonight. The first is the Fantozzi-Cabrera 1613 Route 9D and 1611 Route 9D subdivision and lot line realignment. I'm not going to read the whole public hearing notice, but the applicants seek subdivision and lot line revision approvals. These are located at 1613 Route 9D in the R40s zoning district. This will be two lots to create one additional residential building lot. I won't go through the details of the acreage. Also, a lot line revision between the current tax parcel and an adjacent tax parcel with a house on it. And so that's all I'm going to read after that. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Fred moves it, and Felix seconds it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries seven to zero. All right, would the applicant team like to come up just for a second and give the public just a real quick, little bit more overview than I gave, and what this is about?
Absolutely. Good evening, Board. My name is Nick Caesar from Caesar Engineering, and the applicant here, Mr. Ray Fantozzi. A little overview, there's an existing lot here with an adjacent lot behind it that has some encroachment on this lot here. The intention of the proposed subdivision is to cut the existing lot into three sections, the rear section being conveyed to the rear property owner, which increases a nonconformity in the back. The front lot would then be split into two lots. The existing property, which is here, continues to remain, and a new, single-family, proposed lot, buildable lot, would be created on the front. And that's a general summary of the project. The feedback we've gotten to this point is that it's, as of right, in accordance with the zoning requirements, and all technical comments from the engineering team have been resolved.
Thank you very much. All right, could we just see a show of hands in the audience of people who would like to speak to this matter tonight, if any? Because if there are none for this public hearing, I will not bother to read the rules and regulations for public hearings, because those deal with people speaking at the hearing. So it looks like there is no one here to speak to this matter tonight. If that's the case, we'll hold off on closing the hearing for now and see if anyone else comes in. However, what I would like to do at this point is just ask board members if there are any questions on the public, on this matter during the public hearing. There is no project review tonight for it, but, you know, if there are any questions, this would be a good time to put them before the applicant.
No comments at this point.
All right. So I guess what I'll do next is ask our attorney, Dominic Cordisco, and our engineer, Dennis Lynch, if you have any comments on whether the board should close the public hearing tonight.
I would recommend that the board close the public hearing tonight. It's been duly noticed. It's been open. There's no one here to speak on it.
All right.
Then all of our comments have been addressed at this point. The only outstanding thing was the Board of Health, and that can be condition of final.
Okay. All right, well, I'm not seeing anyone else walk in, and I'll ask one more time if there are no more, no people in the room who would like to speak to this matter. We'll go to the board and see if there's a motion to close the public hearing tonight on the Fantozzi and Cabrera subdivision and lot line realignment.
So moved.
I second.
Anthony moves it. Ravi seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the public hearing is closed. So as I mentioned, there is no project review tonight, however, it seems that since everything has been pretty well addressed in terms of technical engineering details, and if the board has no more questions, what we might want to do is authorize MJ Engineering to prepare a draft EAF Parts 1 and 2, and a draft NAGDEC for the board's consideration at the August 14th meeting. Does that sound like a reasonable thing to do, Dennis?
Yes.
Okay. And Dominic, do you agree with that?
Absolutely.
All right. Board members? All right, would somebody like to make a motion to that effect? That would be authorizing MJ Engineering to prepare a draft EAF Parts 1 and 2 and a draft NAGDEC for the August 14th meeting?
So moved.
Was that Bob?
Yeah.
And is there a second?
Second.
All right, Felix seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Well, while we're on a roll with this project, would it also be appropriate for the board to authorize our attorney to prepare a draft resolution, or possibly resolutions, I'm not sure if it requires separate ones for the subdivision approval and the lot line realignment, but prepare those resolutions for the board's consideration also at the August 14th meeting, assuming that the environmental paperwork is adopted at that meeting? Anyone have any thoughts on that?
No objection to that?
Does that sound good to you?
Sounds reasonable, yes.
Yeah, that sounds appropriate. Like I said, all the comments have been addressed. Any outstanding technical issues with the Board of Health can be a condition of final. So I feel it's appropriate this time.
All right. So Dominic, this would normally, for something like this, I assume it would probably be resolution of preliminary and conditional final approval?
Yes.
And do you think it would require separate resolutions for the lot line realignment and the subdivision, or could it be combined?
I think we could combine it.
Okay. All right, so that's what we'd like a motion for, for the August 14th meeting?
So moved.
That's Fred.
Second.
And is there a second? Five seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries seven to zero. Okay, so we'll see you next month.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, thank you. All right, and the second public hearing tonight is Century Aggregates 107 US Route 9 site development plan. This is a continuation of the public hearing that was opened by the board at the May 8th, 2025 Planning Board Meeting, and continued at the June 12th, 2025 meeting. So I'm not going to reread the public hearing wording. We've done that a couple of times already. There's also no need for a motion to open the public hearing since this is a continuation. Is the applicant team here? And would you like to add any comments at this point before we see if there's anyone from the public ready to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Briefly, Andrew Gilchrist, project attorney. With me is Mark Day, the project engineer. Brian Milliman is also here, who was the sound consultant on the application, as well as Luke Clemente, who's with Century Aggregates. Very briefly, at this point, I think the public is well aware of the proposal, a concrete batch plant proposal for the Century Aggregates facility located on Route 9. We came in with an application that was zoning compliant. The project site is within the planned industrial district. We thought we had a project that started out not only in approvable form, but appropriate. But I do have to say that in this case, the review process has worked. We've been at this for several months. We've worked with the planning board. We've collaboratively worked with the planning board's consultants. There have been a number of comments that we've addressed, and I think through that process, the board has done its job, and I think the applicant has responded, and I think collectively, we have a much better project than when we first came in with the application. So I think the process in this case has worked. In the latest submission, the applicant did submit additional information concerning greenway preservation area. The board had asked us to work with the planning board's consultants on sound issues, which was done in the intervening period, and we've had some additional information on sound. We'll reserve more substantive comments for your project review period of the meeting. I think conceptually, we are in agreement on those concepts, the greenway preservation area, obviously some sound work that has been done. So again, we thank the board. Well, I'll also note for the record that there have been several public comments received. They've been categorized. We have responded to the comments to date in writing for the record and review by board members and their consultants, and we're ready to receive whatever additional comments may come in this evening. So thank you, and we do reserve the time to more substantively address the comments again during your project review later in the meeting. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Good, so what I'd like to do, again, is see if there's a show of hands from members of the public who would like to speak tonight. Doesn't matter if you've already spoken before. We'd like to hear from you. So there are people. I'm just going to quickly go through the rules of conduct, although I have read them before. Those are very basic. Speakers are asked to come to the podium and identify themselves so that their name may be entered into the record. Speakers are limited to one turn at the microphone, and limited to no more than four minutes, and there will be a warning when there is one minute left. I'll ask Dominic Cordisco, our attorney, if you could keep the time on that and let people know when one minute is left. Speakers should provide new or different information to the extent possible. Comments made at, you know, very similar comments made at prior meetings are discouraged, but if you have a different take on them, that's fine. And speakers are encouraged to submit their comments in writing, as we have gotten a few new ones already. And comments are limited to matters before the business, before the board, that is the application that's under review tonight at the hearing. So with that, again, I'll ask you to raise your hands, and I'll recognize you to come up to the podium. So, yes, ma'am, in the... Or if you'd like to come up together, you can do that, too.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Barbara O'Brien, and I live at Glassbury Court. There are a number of people from our community here tonight. We have three major areas of concerns, as we are a residential-commercial area. The number one is water. We would respectfully ask that you engage the expert that presented last meeting from HydroQuest. You found out that you had a motherload of a geyser that could supply water to Fishkill and any future developments indefinitely. And he presented how vulnerable that area was for contamination, if you put the warehouse there. We need to know the impact with Century Aggregates addition with this plant on our water supply. Have you tested the pond in the middle of the Century Aggregate presently? We have all driven past and seen that the water has a aqua emerald-green kind of quality to it. It had to be at one time something that the young people used for water during their camp. But that water ought to be tested. It has an unusual color. The cement plant is proposed to butt up to Clove Creek that snakes and runs through all our properties. HydroQuest presented how easily contamination from trucks, the parking of the trucks contaminates water. We all share in the abundance of water in this area. No boundary line exists in water or air. The aquifer needs to stay secure for all our wells. It feeds all our wells in the area. Please engage HydroQuest to evaluate the impact of a cement plant and the hydrogeologic consequences of a cement plant expansion on the property. Two and three are interconnected. We moved here close to 10 years ago. The expansion of surrounding plants and the impact on air quality and congestion on Route 9 has increased exponentially. Apart from pollen in spring, we have more soft silk-like dust in the house when we open the windows. We can't sit outside some days, too, to asphalt fumes. Have you performed an air quality test, small particle pollution that comes off Route 9? The hazardous congested traffic issue has increased. The trucks come down nine at top speed. Cars entering from Glassbury, Eustis, Horton, East Mountain Road, the senior trailer residence, Nicola's Restaurant, J. Mark Jewelers, on and on. This imposes an increased risk to safety. And this cement plant proposition that you are considering will result in an increase of trucks on nine. It will exacerbate an already overly congested situation if approved cement trucks, as exiting the property, will be entering slowly. They move slowly as they merge onto nine. And it's around a blind curve, and we already have one of those with an existing plant with the asphalt and the rocks and stuff. We are a commercial-residential area. We share the water, we share the air, and the roadways. We all enjoy going to Fishkill. We enjoy the restaurants and the shopping, and I'm sure Fishkill enjoys coming to Cold Spring. We are interconnected. Please take into account our concerns. While not residents of Fishkill, we will be profoundly affected by your determination.
Thank you. Who'd like to be next? Yes, sir, you were going to be there. Okay, come on up.
Thank you. Dennis O'Brien, I live at Glassbury Court, and I just want to add to what my wife said. I appreciate letting us speak as not residents, and we were here for the last meeting you had, the first meeting on the warehouse, and we were both impressed with your, the quality, your diligence, and the commitment you've made. So, very impressive group. We appreciate your ability to listen to us. So I just want to talk about one thing. I wish to address the impact this proposal would have on the truck traffic on not Route 9. In my opinion, cement trucks are not the same as other trucks. An average car weighs 3,000 pounds. That's 1.5 tons. It takes about three seconds for a car to go from 0 to 30. The Route 9 in front of that Century Aggregate, the speed limit is 45. There's hills there, and there's curves there. A car takes three seconds to go from 0 to 3. It weighs 3,000 pounds. A gravel truck carrying 10 yards of gravel weighs 30,000 pounds, 15 tons. A cement truck carrying 10 yards of cement weighs 66,000 pounds, 33 tons. That's twice the weight of a gravel-filled truck. Therefore, a cement truck would take twice as long as a gravel truck to merge onto Route 9 from a full stop. It would take at least twice the distance for that truck to stop. There's curves there, and there's two hills. Aggregate is half a mile from the quarry. Over, when you go over the hill toward the quarry going north, it is very common to have a quarry truck trying to find a spot to make a left-hand turn to go south, and then having to go up a hill, and how long it takes for that truck to make it up the hill. You're talking about adding cement trucks from the other side preceding that hill. Your board is also considering a proposal, this proposal, but also the proposal to build a warehouse on the site of the former golf course. That's within a, so from Aggregate to the golf course is a mile and a half. The approval of either of these proposals would add a significant volume of heavy truck traffic onto a section of road that already is absorbing significant heavy gravel traffic. You must consider the potential danger of adding more heavy trucks, especially cement trucks, on this section of Route 9.
Excuse me, one-minute warning, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate giving the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, who would like to speak next? Yes, sir, in the back.
Mark Decorsia. I want to speak on behalf of the project. I'm a local concrete contractor, and having a plant in Fishkill is going to be super beneficial for us. Having to get concrete in Fishkill is extremely difficult at the moment. The closest plant's either Poughkeepsie, and I know there's a plant in Fishkill right near this plant, but they're never open. It hasn't been a viable plant in, as long as I can remember. So we have to get concrete from either Poughkeepsie or Orange County closer to Middletown. And what that does is every job that I do in Fishkill, it adds $200 to every truckload of concrete that comes. So for the average house, maybe it's 120 yards of concrete. That's 12 trucks. So 12 times 200 added to every project that's done in the Fishkill area, just because of the location of the closest plant. Besides the cost of it, every truck that comes into Fishkill is coming from 60 minutes, 45, 60 minutes, 80 minutes away. That concrete has a shelf life of 90 minutes typically. So almost all the concrete that's coming to Fishkill at this time is close to being overtime. And soon as you get overtime, it starts to affect the strength, affects the mix quality. So therefore, inherently, you're getting inferior concrete, and overpriced concrete in the Fishkill area for everything that gets built around here. So just wanted to take the economics into play. Thank you.
Thank you for this comment. Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight? Yes, ma'am, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Susan Ansback, and I live on East Mountain Road South in Phillips Town. I just have one comment additionally to what's been said tonight, with the very real concern for Clove Creek and the aquifers it supports, as well as the other issues raised during the public hearing on this proposal, among them air quality, traffic, and noise. I hope this planning board makes a positive declaration on this proposed development, so an environmental impact statement will be required to be prepared. Thank you so much for all your consideration.
Thank you. Yes, sir, come on up.
House 142 Old Route 9. Good evening. Just an observation and comment. The applicant has proposed that their project will only make use of .91 acre of property. Why then was there a need to purchase 310 acres of pristine woodland? Could not the planning board recommend, insist that the project be conducted on another, much smaller, suitable location? I know it's been suggested before on other projects. It's pretty obvious, in my opinion, that Century Aggregates has 300-plus acre woodland destruction and aggregate expansion plans in their future. What do you think, or do you already know the future? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else like to speak tonight? Yes, come on up.
Good evening. Ed Bushak, Carolene in Fishkill. Some of my points have already been mentioned by the others. I wanted to support the request to have the hydrogeologist do a study and report on the Century Aggregate property in relation to protecting Clove Creek aquifer, Clove Creek itself, and surrounding natural habitat. I also want to reinforce the request for have the planning board make a positive declaration that will require the preparation of a EIS. And I'm concerned about segmentation, that if this Century Aggregate application gets approved for this concrete plant, they will expand in that area into related plans and structures. I feel the Snow Valley area would be better utilized as open, green space, part of the Hudson Highlands State Park, an inviting and welcoming gateway to Fishkill. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'll just acknowledge that Mr. Bushak did submit two different emails with similar comments, I guess, earlier this week and today, actually. All right, any other comments tonight? All right, seeing no other hands being raised. There have been a few other written comments that were received besides Mr. Bushak's. We received separate emails from Natalie Beglin and Michael Beglin, also asking the board to issue a POSDEC under Seeker. And we've had numerous previous public comments responded. board to issue a POSDEC under Seeker. And we've had numerous previous public comments responded to by the applicant, so those are all in the record. All right, well, if there are no other members of the public in attendance wishing to speak, the board will have to decide tonight whether to close the public hearing.
Sir, may I ask a question?
Well, if you'd like to come up to the podium, you can comment on anything related to this project.
I didn't intend to. I'm Ron Sedolter. I live in Glassbury Court. The gentleman who came up here and spoke about the availability, or lack of availability, of concrete in this area had mentioned that there is a facility in Fishkill that is, quote, "never open and never available." And I was just kind of wondering, not for nothing, but has anyone given thought to acquiring or working with that particular facility, rather than go through all of this to cut away what's out there and, again, bring into question the roads, the water, and so forth, as you've already heard tonight? Has there been any thought given to working with the facility that already exists? Thank you.
All right, that certainly is something that the applicant team can address down the road, so to speak, across the road. All right, so let me just get a sense from the board first whether we should be thinking about closing the public hearing at this point?
I think so.
Yes.
Well, in the past few months, Mr. Chairman, I think we've gotten a lot of public comment, and the idea of public hearings is to get the comments from the public, and I think we've received those. I would also maybe suggest we extend maybe another 10 days. Anybody can send anything in that we would add to the file. But I think we've heard from the public of all the things that they're concerned about, and I think we can close the public hearing.
Yeah, most of the new comments seem to be kind of a repeat of the previous ones, so...
Any other thoughts?
Support closing the public hearing.
So, let me just go to Dominic at this point and see what you think.
Felix laid out an excellent analysis as to where the board stands. You've had a public hearing open now for some time, and you've heard from the public certainly have an appreciation of the concerns that they've raised, and keeping the public hearing open, I think, would likely just continue along the same lines of the comments that have been made, and time is coming for the board to make decisions as to how it wants to proceed with the project.
Yeah, I did notice that we have begun to get a number of repeated comments. I think this was the first time we did hear specific comments about a POSDEC versus a NEGDEC, which was interesting to hear. And actually, later on, under project reviews, we will be continuing some discussion on that matter. And we actually have a draft environmental assessment form, Part II, that CPL has put together for the board's consideration. So, with that, is there a motion to close the public hearing on the Century Aggregates proposal? And I'll just add in, Felix did make the suggestion of allowing written comments to be submitted until, I think that would be Monday, July 21st, 2025? Would you like to move that, Felix?
So moved.
Felix moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Second is it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so the public hearing is closed, and there will be further discussion regarding Century Aggregates later on tonight. So, thank you all very much, and we definitely appreciate all of the comments that we have received. All right, the next item on the agenda is a request for extension of approval. This will be for 415, 453, U.S. Route 9, Dutchess Mall Site Development Plan. The applicant's representative requests two successive 90-day extensions of the resolution of preliminary and conditional final approval. The board adopted the resolution of preliminary and conditional final approval on February 9, 2023, and recently granted a three-month extension on March 13th, 2025 that shall expire on July 28th, 2025. Welcome. Would you like to introduce yourself and give a very short explanation of what this extension is about and what conditions remain on the project?
Certainly. Good evening. For the record, my name is Allison Bowser with the law firm Cuddy &amp; Fader, appearing on behalf of the applicant. Since we were last before your board in March of this year, we're pleased to share that we perfected the subdivision approval, so we satisfied all outstanding conditions of approval. We went through final reviews with your board's consultants, and we ended up filing the plat with the county. We've also been working to perfect the site development plan approval and have satisfied the vast majority of those conditions of approval. We're just currently working with the town board's attorney on the letter of credit. So, we're seeking an additional two 90-day extensions to complete those conditions of approval, and also to begin compiling and submitting a building permit.
Any questions from board members?
Are we getting ready to build something?
I'm sorry?
Are we getting ready to build anything there?
That's certainly the hope, yes. There's a lot of interest in the market. We're continuing to move forward.
I mean, I have probably a silly question. Why are you asking for two successive 90-day extensions?
So, if it was just the site plan, approval conditions, one would certainly be more than enough, but this approval resolution is conditioned on applying for and obtaining a building permit, so the applicant views the two periods necessary here.
So, can't we do like one longer extension, kind of the...
Yeah, well, that's what we did in March. We gave one basically 90-day or three-month extension. So, that's an option for the board.
No, I'm saying one 180-day instead of two, instead of two successive 90-day, one longer.
One...
One six-month.
They normally come in three-month or 90-day periods, and so that's why it's considered two 90-day extensions instead of a 180-day extension. It's just terminology. But if you'd like to make a motion to do a 180-day extension, there would be nothing stopping that.
It's a reasonable request, and satisfying these conditions takes time, and many other municipalities typically grant either six-month or 180 days, or even year-long extensions on projects.
Yeah, I thought we had given six-month extension before that.
Correct.
All right. Any other questions or comments? And if somebody would like to venture to make a motion and word it however you would like. But this would be to approve an extension of the resolution of preliminary and conditional final site development plan approval for 415, 453, Route 9, Dutchess Mall, and then with whatever period of time the board would like to consider.
Two successive 90-day extensions? I think it's fine, not one 180-day. Yeah.
Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Make a motion, thank you, Bill. Two 90-day extensions, two successive 90-day extensions.
Okay, I'll second.
That way, yeah, that way you can put a plus mark in between.
Exactly.
Robbie, can you second that?
Yeah, I second, yeah.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. We definitely look forward to getting that project underway, which the first phase of which is the demolition of that terrible building that's on the site.
You don't think it's historic?
For probably reasons you wouldn't even suspect, yeah.
We're looking forward to it, looking forward to it. Thank you very much.
I can tell you, a lot of people, I think, think it's historical.
Good use for it.
And that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are now at project reviews, and the first one is 300 Westage Hotel Site Development Plan, or to review a draft resolution of preliminary and conditional final approval and to consider its adoption and authorizing the chair to sign said document. So, Dominic, would you like to quickly go through the resolution?
Yes, I'm just pulling it up now. My apologies.
And at some point, Dennis, you can think about this, but we know that you put together figures based on the applicant's cost estimates on site improvements for...
Yep, I have it pulled up. We can go over that when you want to.
Yeah, so we've got the maintenance bond and the inspection fee based on your estimate, and then he'll also be making a recommendation to the town board on the performance bond amount. So, if you want to, do you want to go over your memo now, or just...
We can. The applicant did provide a construction cost estimate. With that, there's the maintenance bond that would be in place for one year after the CO to, for landscaping. The cost of that would be $85,973. So, the applicant would have to bond that work there. And then also for the inspection fee, it's a percentage of the overall cost. The overall cost was $840,530, so the inspection fee for that would be $58,830, or several percent.
Okay. All right, Dominic, are you ready?
I think so. Debbie, there were drafts back and forth because of the additional information that was provided in connection with the cost estimates. I'm working off of draft number three, which would be dated July 8.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I should have Dennis's figures in there.
Correct, correct. Yeah, it does. So, thank you. So, this draft is for both preliminary and conditional final approval for the site development plan for the 300 Westage Hotel. The resolution follows the standard format that the board has been used to seeing for quite some time now, and relays all of the procedural matters that have brought us to this point, including the fact that the applicant obtained approval from the zoning board of appeals for the variances that were required on June 17. One thing that came to my attention today was that the resolution does not include the waivers that were previously granted by the board. And so, my suggestion is that we add that language now if the applicant is prepared to provide that information. But my understanding is that there were waivers that were provided by the board in connection with parking and loading for the facility. That's correct. And so, I think we would need to add that information into the resolution. And we could do that after the whereas regarding the zoning board of appeals, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that's the fourth whereas on page two.
Right.
So, we could add a new whereas regarding the waivers for parking and loading.
Previously received certain waivers regarding parking and loading that were provided, that were granted by the planning board. My apologies for that oversight.
Yeah, I overlooked that as well.
Please put that, it was my responsibility, though, so I apologize for that. The conditions of the approval are the fairly standard conditions. They include addressing any outstanding engineering comments that were laid out in, I believe, in the last engineering review memo, which was from June 12. The applicant also has to secure any and all approvals identified in the EAF for the project. There is performance bond required, a maintenance bond, and an inspection fee. All is outlined by Mr. Lynch. You have standard revisions that need to be made to the plan prior to the chairman being able to sign it. And there's a requirement that all fees are paid and escrow deposits kept current. There's a requirement that the applicant has to abide by the terms of the ZBA's variance decision. And then there's standard conditions regarding landscape and screening, lighting, and architectural design in details. Essentially, nothing can be built except as shown on the plan. There's a limitation of use as well, you know, that the site is being approved for a 103-room hotel with the associated improvements, and that's all that the site could be used for without coming back for further approval or an amended approval from the board. Only what's shown on the plan is what is allowed to be constructed, and the applicant also has to abide by the seeker negative declaration. And this is condition number 18, and I believe that it in error clerically included a reference to an amended negative declaration, so the word amended should be deleted. And that about covers it.
And then there, just noticed a couple of quick things. Back on page three, under outstanding engineering comments, I believe the date of the town engineer's memo is June 6. It's not on the meeting, it was June 12. So, I think I have it right here in front of me. So, let's correct the date on that. And then, there's a number sequencing problem. Page five, right after item number eight, condition eight, it goes to 10. It should go from nine through 18. But that's just a clerical correction. So, with that, any other questions or comments from board members? All right, any questions from the applicant team? Okay. All right, then, would somebody like to make a motion to approve and adopt the draft resolution of preliminary and conditional final site development plan approval for 300 Westage Hotel by Riverlink's Hotels, located at 300 Westage Business Center Drive, as reviewed and revised tonight, and authorize the chair to sign it?
So...
Oh, that was two people.
That was, I think it was on that side.
Bob.
I think Bob, I think Bob got it.
If you need a second, I'll give you one.
Anthony will second it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So, that carries by a vote of seven to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Debbie, I made those revisions to my copy as well. I'll send it to you.
All right, so this would have been the Fishkill Commerce Center next on the agenda, but that has been adjourned, as I said, to the August 14, 2025 meeting at the request of the... that has been adjourned, as I said, to the August 14th, 2025 meeting at the request of the applicant. So, um, there'll be no discussion on that tonight. And that will bring us to, back to Century Aggregates. 107 U.S. Route Nine Site Development Plan, or to review the submission made by the applicant's representative on June 25th, 2025, a draft full environmental assessment form, part two, and to consider adopting and authorizing the chair to sign that draft environmental assessment form, which we actually might not do tonight, but I'll, I'll get to that later. So, um, the floor is yours again, and um, if you'd like to give us a quick update on um any of the application materials that you submitted?
Sure, I'll, I'll start again. Andy Gilchrist, project attorney, and Mark Day, project engineers with me. So there were two, what I would call overriding comments in the review memos, particularly CPL's memo from July 3rd. If I can categorize it as the visual or character of the Route Nine corridor, and that principally addresses uh, what I think we've now identified as the Greenway Preservation Area. A number of comments from CPL on that in their memo, items eight through thirteen, maybe seven through thirteen. Again, conceptually, I think we're in agreement on that. It looked like a lot of the detail simply had to be worked out as in between the planning board, its consultant, and quite frankly, Mark's office on that in terms of allowed uses, not allowed uses within that Greenway Preservation Area, not uses. You seem puzzled, and maybe that's the wrong word. What we think you're getting at is what can, what cannot be done within that Greenway Preservation Area, meaning no tree cutting, preservation of existing vegetation, and replacement of any vegetation that is lost or diseased. Is that conceptually where we're at?
Yeah, I mean, I'd rather talk about it when it's, yeah, but, but yeah, I think it's...
I'm going over that. I'm trying to establish that...
It's clarification to...
Yes.
Whatever it is seems like the applicant is intending to do, it's to put it down so it's clearly on the plans.
Correct, and again, conceptually, I think we're in agreement, and that acts both on the issue of visual impact, and there's a component of that in terms of sound mitigation. So I think that, that, uh, subject to clarification and getting the details in place is something that's there. Then I did wanna hit on sound as well, if I can, for a moment, before you have your discussion.
Sure.
The issue came up at the last meeting. Obviously, we've done a sound analysis of the projection of the sound from the concrete batch plant. We've utilized accepted methodology for sound analysis and mitigation. As part of that, we used an existing concrete plant that my client has located in Hudson, and took sound readings from that plant, which will be the same or similar equipment that is proposed for the Fishkill location, and took sound readings at fifty feet from that plant. We then took ambient sound readings in Fishkill. Just through methodology, you take the sound, and this is layman's, of course. We leave the, the sound to the experts, and we do have ours here. But conceptually, you take the sound readings from that operating equipment at fifty feet, and project that onto the ambient conditions that were measured here in Fishkill, and running through their analytical calculations to determine whether that would result in any increase over ambient conditions at the property line. And in this case, the analysis showed that it did not, that there was not going to be any increase over existing ambient noise or sound levels. The board at the last meeting said, "Well, we'd like to be able to confirm that in the event the plant is constructed and operational." And conceptually, that made sense, and the board directed us to coordinate with the board's sound consultant, and we did that in the field. The issue that came back in CPL's memo was, again, confirming the sound as measured at the property line. And I just wanna conceptually go over why I don't think, and we don't think, that addresses what the board is, is looking for, if we understand this correctly. The issue with taking a measurement of, again, what would constitute ambient at the property line after presumably a plant is constructed and operational is you're not sure where that sound is propagating or coming from. And the concern is that if you do take a sound reading in a year to determine whether the, the, the numbers are higher than is, is currently included in our sound report, is that we don't know if the sound that may come in that later reading of ambient is coming from the concrete plant or from another sound source, 'cause you're taking it at the property line. The purpose, as, as I view it in layman's terms, of gathering the ambient is just to get existing conditions. And then you're superimposing on that the new sound source, which would be the concrete batch plant. We think the better approach here to confirm the numbers and the methodology is not to take the, the reading at the property line, because again, we don't control what sound may be picked up, and particularly off-site sound that may be picked up, is to, again, measure the actual concrete batch plant operations at that fifty feet from the Fishkill plant. Not from different equipment that was in the Hudson location, but to actually now measure the actual plant equipment in operation at Fishkill at fifty feet. Get the actual sound being generated by that plant, and run it through the same analysis using that same ambient. That way, you're comparing apples to apples, not potentially apples to oranges. I'll defer to, again, to the sound experts, and if we get into this discussion, certainly our sound expert is here as well. We just wanna have a real comparison, and my client is not opposed to having a post-operational sound analysis, but we propose that the appropriate place to measure that sound is the fifty feet from the actual plant operations. Get the actual sound readings generated by the plant, and then superimpose them on that same ambient to confirm the conclusions that are in our existing report. And I'll again say on, on that issue, we're obviously using sound analysis, sound protocols that have been adopted by DEC. And, and on that protocol, even if there's an increase in ambient of zero to three decibels, you know, at off-site sound receptors, the department says that's not significant. If you're increasing the decibels between three and six at off-site receptors, it requires mitigation. And if you're above six, you really do have to do project modifications. There's too much sound. Our study showed there was no increase above ambient at the property line. We'd like to confirm that by taking the actual sound readings from the equipment to be operated in Fishkill after it's up and running to confirm those conclusions. Not opposed to doing post-development sound work, but we think the appropriate measuring point is at the plant. And again, I just wanted to make that point, more from a layman's term, as I understand it, rather than from the expert term.
So maybe just one quick question, then. If you were going to measure it at fifty feet from the plant, how would you determine where? That could be anywhere within a, you know, circumference of fifty feet from the plant. It would most...
That's a fair point.
It would most likely, I assume, be somewhere toward Route Nine or where the residences are.
And that's a fair point, and I'd have to confirm with, with our sound...
Yeah.
Yeah, come on up, Brian. Again, this is Brian Milliman who would speak to that. That's a good point. It, it needs to be located properly.
Thanks.
Yeah, um, for clarification, uh, the sound levels will be taken...
Who are you, please?
Huh?
You should have...
Bear your face in the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry, Brian Milliman.
Yep.
Uh, just before I get going, for clarification, when I take sound level readings on equipment, it's at various distances, usually greater than fifty feet for safety reasons. We normalize the sound levels to fifty feet for running the equations afterward. Uh, like at, at the Hudson plant, when I measured the, uh, the concrete plant there, I took measurements at four different locations in a radial pattern around the plant. Uh, each, each location, I took, uh, ten different measurements, and I used the loudest directional sound for doing the, the calculations, just to be conservative. Uh, we would do something very similar at the Fishkill plant. We would set up in a radial pattern around the plant, um, and collect multiple sound levels, you know, from each direction.
Quick question, talking about the sound and the, the plant. Now, are you just talking about the plant itself that's, you know, manufacturing the concrete or whatever? Or are you also factoring in four or five trucks moving at the same time in the plant?
Yeah, that's a good question. So when I, uh, when I did the, uh, the Hudson sound levels, I had to wait, uh, we had to wait for some weather considerations. You need, you know, a day where the, the wind's not blowing, it's not raining, um, and we also were waiting for a big job. We didn't wanna get the sound levels of the plant when it's only running, you know, minimal, minimal levels for a small job. Uh, we get, we got the measurements when the plant was running full bore on a big pour. There was, uh, trucks lined up, and it was constantly going, and the cement, uh, blower was going, um, and we stopped measurements and discarded them with the cement blower turned off, just to be, make sure we got the loudest sound levels and everything going on at once. And, you know, we would use the same methodology at the Fishkill plant.
The, the actual equipment does have like sound decimal ratings?
Yes, yeah, and it's the, it's the equipment itself that's the real driver of the, of the noise at a concrete plant. The cement blower and the concrete trucks themselves are the loudest components.
Yeah, 'cause I would, I would think they have things for the men working around the plant, like OSHA, like, you know, nineteen-twenty-six codes, and understand, like, you know, noise decibels constantly going or something for them. All right.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks. All right, um... Well, there was more in the response letter that we could get to if there are any questions from board members, and there also was, um, an update on responses to public hearing comments from the months previous to tonight. So if any board members have any questions at this point... Yeah, go ahead, Jody.
How many trucks do you anticipate that you're gonna be dealing with every day? Because I know nothing about concrete, but now I'm a little concerned when the individual came up and said the nearest plant is outside of Middletown or Hudson. And if there is a life of only, say, ninety minutes of concrete, that would mean trucks from New York City would be able to come up and get the concrete. How many trucks are we looking to supply a day? Ten? Fifty? A hundred?
Well, I'll, I'll let Mr. Clemente address that, the actual operator of the plant.
Yeah, I know nothing about concrete, so now these things are gonna jog with my brain.
Yep, Luke Clemente, uh, general manager of Century Aggregates. Um, one, one thing I guess I wanna point out, we, I don't think anybody mentioned using the Hudson plant to serve here. So there are, there is a plant in, in Pleasant Valley. There's a plant, there's, uh, concrete suppliers, uh, and Carmel and Brewster. There's concrete plants in, uh, uh, south of Peak Skill. Uh, there's concrete plants in, you know, Orange County, but they're a distance, and I, I think the comments that were made tonight stand legitimate. Concrete is a perishable product. It has a life, very short time, um, and that basically you have to discharge it from the barrel, or it's gonna start to harden in the barrel. Um, and there's also transportation charges, so the farther you're going with a mixer, general suppliers add additional charges, 'cause the, the, the more time you're using the truck, the increase the price. So that, I just wanna make sure we have that. Um, our, our proposal and our application is, uh, is six ready-mix trucks is what we're planning, and I would, and I would assume, uh, like any business starting out, it'll start off very small. Um, so our, our closest plant to this market is the one in Pleasant Valley. Um, but, you know, so the theory would be that as we gain business, um, we can move trucks here, but I, I would think on day one, you start literally at zero yards out, and that it will take us time to fully get to six mixers.
Is that your overall goal, six trucks a day?
When we look at the market, we think the, what this market could support here is six mixers, and again, the, the goal is efficiency. You need more trucks when you're traveling farther. So if, and we do bring concrete today from Pleasant Valley down to Fishkill. Um, as you, as you, as you know, I think some of these projects were before you. There's been quite a bit of warehouse construction in the area. And, and some of those, and one of them, I know one often, you know, we did a portable, uh, we actually brought a portable plant, put it on site for the Amazon warehouse. That saved a lot of, uh, traffic time. Um, that's seldomly allowed or seldomly available, but a lot of the other warehouses in the area have resulted in substantial trucking.
So, uh, what is the maximum number of trucks that the plant can handle, Dominic?
I don't know.
How many is it?
Twelve.
Yep, and I, and I do wanna point out too, it's in, it's in the report on transportation, uh, 'cause I, I've heard this asserted numerous times about increased traffic. And we also heard tonight about, um, how mixers are different. You know, I beg to differ. The tractor-trailers, hauling aggregate, and other tractor-trailers, and there's a lot of tractor-trailers on Route Nine, um, are substantially in excess. Uh, you know, it's not unusual for a tractor-trailer to exceed fifty tons. Um, so a mixer is actually lighter, substantially lighter than a, than a tractor-trailer, and they're, they're pulling in and out on, on Route Nine today. The other thing that's in our study that, you know, again, it, people have said, "Hey, you're gonna increase traffic." Um, we're, what we're really proposing here, and, you know, is that we're becoming vertically integrated, so we have aggregate on site. We do this at numerous sites at other locations. Um, we have aggregate, and we sell aggregate third-party. People come in with their trucks. We don't own any trucks today as a company at this location. Uh, we're totally an FOB pickup location, so truckers come in, all different types of trucks, tandem trucks, tri-axles, tractor-trailers, and they pick up the stone and sand, and they bring it to other locations. Our plan as we go forward here is that we will use the sand and stone on site, not a hundred percent, but, and again, it will be a slow process of evolution going from today, we're a hundred percent selling third-party, where we'll start to, uh, as we consume more sand and stone ourselves in the concrete plant, you'll see a decrease in the number of trucks leaving the site for tractor-trailers and tandem trucks selling third-party. We, our, our, the real choke point is, you know, we have a, um, you know, just the size of our sand and gravel mine, and, and its ability to make sand and stone is, is basically that, that, it is what it is, and so if we sell to ourselves, that's less we're selling third-party. So in our, our traffic study, that was well documented, that you will see not any, you know, a, a material increase in trucks. There was, there was some reference to, for example, um, the employees. We're gonna have upwards of eight employees at this location when we, when we get the full six mixers. There's two people that are on site as well. So you'll have eight employees at the, at the maturity stage coming on the site in the morning and leaving at the end of day. That's incremental traffic. And we also have the cement that is brought off-site onto the site, so I think we set it a maximum, uh, day. I think we, I think we had like five trailers. But the real substantial traffic that is going on in our site today is, is, is dump trucks and tractor-trailers leaving, selling aggregate. That will decrease in mixers, so there's gonna be a change in trucks. So there's no material impact, and that was, you know, the finding of the traffic engineer that did the study, and that's been reviewed by the town consultants. Um, and so I think the argument that, uh, we're going to make a material impact on traffic is not supported by the record.
Can you tell us where that other cement plant is that's not operating?
Well, that, there, there is a plant, um, in Fishkill, Crane... Well, there's a plant in Fishkill, Cranesville Concrete, and I guess I'll make one comment on that because I've had discussions with neighbors that are here tonight. The Cranesville plant, and again, I feel that's creating a real challenge for this application because the people on Carroll Lane in particular have not been happy with that, you know, participant or, you know, competitor, I'll call them, because it's in close proximity to Carroll Lane. They can hear the backup alarms on the mixers in the morning and they can hear the plant. They can hear, and again, and I just to your point on the question, the plant itself doesn't make noise per se. It's very quiet plants typically, just a little air, opening gates and so forth. But the big noise generators are the mixers and the cement haulers. And those sounds can be heard on Carroll Lane. And I think when we started theorizing about where to put this plant, because that question came up tonight, you know, why, you know, why does it have to be where you're putting it? The considerations that we really went deep into were, how can we locate this plant in a way that it can't be, and I have to be careful on how I say this, I was about to say, it can't be heard by the people off the site. But technically, sound is sound. You can hear it, but I think to Andy's comment he made earlier, the sound that you're hearing that's generated from the concrete plant is below the ambient noise level. So, for all practical purposes, you can't hear it. Now, if you really had the right sound machine, you could pick up that sound wave, but it's below the ambient noise level. It's not contributing to the overall noise at the boundary line. So, that was a consideration, setting it back from Route Nine as far as possible. It was also a consideration that we knew people would not want to see it. That's a big issue with this competitor plant across the street. It's kind of an eyesore. It's right out there on Route Nine, everybody can see it, it's not pretty. Our plant is basically going to be, for lack of a better word, double hedgeroe, if you will. There's the Route Nine corridor, which we've already, and we have more work to do there, but we've made it very difficult to be able to see into the mine when you're driving down Route Nine. And then, this has a second level of protection because we're taking advantage with the greenway we're creating, that there's basically the Clove Creek waterway and the embankments and the mature trees that are along that. Virtually even when the leaves are off the tree, the forest is very, very thick, very hard. Most people don't know the campground's down there. Most people, the building that we're proposing to take down, the pavilion building, that's been down there. Most people don't know it's there, they can't see it. But that building's coming down and that's where the concrete plant's going. And so, I think, you know, those are the considerations. So, the idea, you know, let's look at this site that's across the street and bring, you know, make that site active again, if you will, more active than it is. It's already been a challenge for the people on Carroll Lane. Doesn't sound like a very reasonable suggestion.
I have one final question. The gentleman said you own the one in Hudson?
Yes.
Have you ever expanded the one in Hudson?
No, that is a good question. So, you know, and we do own numerous plants and they serve their local market. And again, the reason they serve their local market is that there is this timeout feature. So, when you look at the area Hudson, and, you know, I assume some of you are familiar with that, it's got a local market and it's got a certain size to it and we serve that market. And the same thing here, there's kind of a pocket here and, you know, I think there was, for whatever reason, you know, the industry's changed a lot in the last thirty years. There used to be plants in Newburgh, they're gone. You know, this plant that we're talking about tonight across the street used to be active and has been allowed to go into disrepair. We're a one-hundred-and-ten-year-old family business and we've been expanding. And so, to your point, it's not that we're expanding by getting increased use out of our current sites, we expand by geographically expanding and that's how we grow our business.
That's a two-part question for me because Mr. O'Malley brings up my next point. You bought three-hundred-and-ten acres, but you're only using a very, very, very small portion.
Right. So, you know, I heard that comment and it wasn't like the option, you know, what we were after when we bought the property was, we are in the aggregate and ready-mix business. As I mentioned, we're vertically integrated in many of those locations. And in fact, the previous owner, which was the Monford family that's here in Fishkill, they were vertically integrated. You know, they were mining sand and stone and selling it to the block plant that's here in Fishkill. And so, when we took it over, they decided they weren't going to mine anymore. And it is, you know, just a little history there. It's been around a long time. The type of mining has changed there, you know. So, it used to be above-water table mining and it has now expanded and we're making a man-made lake on that property, so we're mining, you know, below water table there. But the, going back to this vertical integration model, but, you know, when someone says to you, "Well, what are you going to do with the rest of the property?" I've had discussions, I think it's well-known here in the community that this property has a lot of history and it's had a lot, it's had some controversy. I like to think that, and I think even for some of the people who spoke here tonight, I think I've been, since we took it over six years ago, I think if anything they could, I think just to be fair, I think they would have to acknowledge that we're a much better neighbor and a much more listening neighbor. And I think we've been more responsive. So, I think there's been improvement already in that interaction since we've taken over the property.
I appreciate your answers and your honesty.
Yep. And one other point on that, my client purchased the facility, or we say the facility, was it six years ago?
Yeah.
And it was a three-hundred-and-ten-acre site. And so, it was, you buy the three-hundred-and-ten acres. Obviously, the mining is on a limited portion. And what's being proposed now is on a very limited portion of former campground. And the balance of the parcel is the balance of the parcel and no current proposal in front of the town.
Following on the, even though it's right now, it's a very limited portion, from your business perspective, do you see the site expanding in the near future?
Yeah, so, I guess, go ahead.
Again, the issue of, let me phrase that differently. What's in front of the board currently is the, if I can call it, plus or minus one-acre site plan. There's no, nothing in front of the board, there's no plan in front of the board concerning...
Can you turn the microphone, please? You can't hear me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me scoot over. I apologize for that.
Can you repeat?
I can repeat. So, I'll start by saying, I'll rephrase then. What's currently in front of the board is the plus or minus one-acre site plan for the concrete batch plant on the former campground site. The balance of the property is not currently under review by the board. Obviously, there are existing mining operations on a portion of that property. And there's also a significant amount of property that is outside the existing mine boundary as well as the proposal. But that's not in front, anything in front of the board for a review. Anything addressing that? At this point, I'm concerned that it muddies the record, it's somewhat speculative. We're here really to review the issue of the proposed concrete batch plant. We've heard the word segmentation tonight. A comment there said, "I'm concerned about segmentation." My concern, if we start speculating about what may occur at some point in the future, that gives concern to me about segmentation and cumulative impacts. That's not in front of the board. I can't emphasize this enough. What's currently in front of the board is a one-acre site plan for a proposed concrete batch plant with access over the existing entrance onto Route Nine. And we appreciate that.
And I think just to emphasize that point, that goes back to when we were discussing where to put this concrete plant. That was one of the other considerations was, and this has been our practice since we've been on the site, we're just affecting what has already been affected. So, the campground has been developed, has a long history. There used to be a ski area there, there was a Parquet Wood factory there, there was the campground. It's had many uses, it's been in use. We're talking about the commercial redevelopment of an existing area of the property. And I think, you know, to the gentleman's comment about these concerns about the future, I think we incorporated that in our design. We're not disturbing what is natural.
In fact, I'll just bring up a couple of points related to this. There are a couple of elements that have entered into our discussions that are actually outside of that zero-point-nine-acre area. And the most important one I'm thinking about is the Greenway Preservation Area, which has entered into the discussions because of its potential role of creating some screening and buffering from the visual and sound aspects. So, that's one of them. And the other I'm thinking about is the, call it, road system that the trucks will use from the site entrance on Route Nine to the plant. And that's going through other portions of other property owned by the applicant. So, that's just sort of a clarification that there, I don't think the intent of the applicant was to segment other aspects of the larger property from this particular proposal. And the ones that are relevant, the ones I just mentioned, or the two examples I can think of now, have been discussed quite a bit in terms of our review of this project.
Right. And we concur. And the Greenway Preservation, I think, is appropriately kind of categorized as mitigation. And the use of the internal road system leading out to Route Nine, partially new but partially existing, that is there. So, I concur with the chairman's comment on that.
So, getting back to what you said before about you kind of going away from more of the aggregate and reusing, you know, using it yourself. So, you thinking that, I'm just trying to think of how, you know, how much concrete you're going to be trying to sell to make up the difference of not selling the aggregate. Do you see that as a viable transition or...
Yeah, it's very viable and also because we're in both businesses, we're also indifferent, right?
I know there's a plant burned down in Peekskill.
Peekskill. Oh, yes, you're right. I know about that one too.
Yes.
But, no, so we're, that's, I think, also part of our flexibility as an operator. We're, we don't have to like aggressively go out and sell. In essence, if we're not selling concrete, then we're going to be selling aggregate. And we're going to be selling both at the same time. But, you know, clearly, if the concrete business, you know, and we wouldn't be here if we didn't think it was going to be a success. We think it will be a success. And as that concrete business grows, it's just physically going to limit the amount of sand and gravel we'll be able to sell third-party.
I wanted to mention the Overview of Concrete Batch Plant Operations, the document that was received by the board on June twenty-fifth, 2025. I thought it was a very helpful document because it kind of put in one place a lot of what we've heard in discussions at the meetings, but it was good to see it put down on paper. One thing I'll just suggest is that there is no actual preparer or date on it. And so, it would be a good idea for future reference purposes to put the proper citations on it.
Yep. Good point. Thank you.
But I was wondering if you or anyone on the team could just give a thumbnail summary to the board of the plant operations. I know we've heard some of it before, but there was amazing, a lot of detail in how this thing actually works and comes together. So, any comments you would like to make on that might be helpful.
Yeah. I guess I'll start by just pointing out, you know, we have a processing plant in the sand and gravel mine. So, when you mine gravel, you're basically, and these gravel deposits were left over by the glaciers, you know, the sand and stone. And what we're doing is we disaggregate it. You know, we call it aggregate, but we're disaggregating the sand and gravel, breaking it down into its separate components. So, one component's sand for the most part, then there's pea stone, and then there's three-quarter inch stone. Any stone bigger than three-quarter gets crushed down and to make it into the smaller components. So, those are the three primary products that we typically sell at this site. When you think of a concrete plant, you're reversing the process. So, now, and most of the, and most of the sand and stone we sell is for concrete. So, I always make this point as well, we're very important to the ecosystem here in the Fishkill area. We have, it's just, it's been very interesting since we're new here to see how many companies are really dependent on us and use us. So, you know, we have, there's mobile mix guys, there's precast companies, there's block companies, there's bagging companies, all here, you know, within, you know, within twenty miles, maybe ten miles of the Fishkill facility that are using our materials. Again, because the glacier put it down, that's a very kind of high-quality sand and gravel. It's been rinsed through the glacier in the melting of the ice. And then, those qualities are very important for concrete manufacturing. You know, when you make concrete, you want a high-quality sand, you want a high-quality stone. The reason, there's a washing operation, and we do wash our sand and gravel before separating it. You want to rinse out the siltation from it. And then, when you have the concrete plant, you're putting it back together. And this is why clean aggregate is so important to concrete manufacturing. Basically, the cleanliness creates voids. And then, when the cement is added back in, the cement fills those voids and that's what creates the good binding. So, when we look at this concrete plant that we propose, you're basically, you have these ground silos that where dump trucks will go from the gravel mine over to the concrete plant and dump the different types of sand and stone into separate bins. Then, there's a conveyor system under that. These plants are all highly automated. This will be a state-of-the-art plant. And there'll be a control room where the operator of the plant, when he wants material, he'll open a gate at the bottom of the silo. It will fall on the conveyor belt. The conveyor belt takes it up, puts it in what we call the ag building. Again, the ag building has separate silos in there as well. We're always keeping the sand and stone products separate. It's like, you know, for lack of a better word, it's like, I guess, cooking. It's a recipe. We have batch computers. You tell the computer what type of mix you want and mixes come in many different flavors. And the batch computer automatically, like a robot really, it's really a robotic plant, is weighing out the different sands and stone and cement to the exact recipe so that every load is exactly the same as the last load. And then, it goes into the mixer. And so, the mixer theoretically really is the factory. You know, as I mentioned, the plant itself is relatively passive. You know, it's, other than the conveyor belt, you're using gravity feed on silos and then use the conveyor to take it up. And then, you're using gravity again to bring it back down to the truck. And then, the mixer is doing the mixing, you know. And there is a requirement for how many minutes that you mix the barrel to get it ready before it leaves the site to go to the customer's job. And I think we also, you know, spoke, you know, because this has come up about air emissions. A lot of assertions have been made about, wow, you know, we're going to be breathing. But again, we're following New York State laws. The plant itself basically does not require an air permit because under New York State law, it's not deemed to be emitting provided you have two mitigation measures on the plant, which we will have and, you know, all our plants do. Basically, you have to have a baghouse at the top of the cement silo so that when you're filling the cement silo, any air released from the cement silo gets captured in a baghouse to filter out the particulate matter. And then, when that cement goes down through the plant, gravity feed, and it's time to leave the enclosed chamber to go into the truck, as that cement goes into that mixer, you can get a little bit of a puff cloud there at the hopper point. And as long as you have a shroud that puts it right into the hopper of the back of the mixer so that, making sure the cement is going in the barrel, and then if you get some blowback coming out of the mixer as you're discharging that cement in, there's a vacuum system there. There's a second collection system to vacuum that air to make sure no particulates are leaving. And if you have those two, those two safety features and two environmental features, then the argument is there is no emission and therefore no air permit is required.
One thing I was wondering, because the descriptions were fascinating, and it appears that a lot of the plant operation is based on computer and electronic mechanisms. But what I was wondering is if there's a system failure of any of the components, is there like a fail-safe mechanism that shuts the thing down temporarily or sends out some kind of a warning signal that something has to be adjusted or...
Good evening. I'm Nick Clemente. I operate the Pleasant Valley plant that we've discussed a couple of times. There are a couple of fail-safes that are included on the plant. If it does sense that, if the scale senses that something is being released, it will automatically shut itself down until something can be con... automatically shut itself down until something can be confirmed, and the operator has to override that safety feature, that error.
And so there's always, there's always at least one plant operator, a human being, you know, at the plant or nearby, so that if something has to be addressed, they're there pretty quickly?
Yes. During business hours, there's always at least one person there.
Okay. Thanks. All right. There's, so we've already gone through a lot, and there's a lot more to get to. So if there are no more questions for now, why don't we go to our engineering report from MJ? It looks like a lot of things have been addressed. So why don't you go over the memo, Dennis? In fact, I see a lot of the items have no comment.
Yeah, we have our memo. It's dated July 3rd. As you mentioned, the majority of the comments are, are no comments on here. The only thing, they did provide the plans for the onsite septic system, which was its own separate plan. So we just asked that be included, incorporated into the overall set of plans, once they get the Board of Health approval for that. So that's really the only outstanding. Everything else has been addressed. All the stormwater and other engineering comments have been addressed.
Yeah, I was also going to just ask you specifically, Dennis, whether you can confirm that the stormwater infiltration basin that's proposed will mitigate potential impacts of pollutants or contaminants that might, for instance, go into Clove Creek, or that would prevent contaminants from going into Clove Creek?
It does, they, you know, they did provide a mitigation in the form of pretreatment. So there's, before it even enters the system, the collection into the manholes, they have larger sumps, so larger particulates can fall out of that. And then before it goes into the main infiltration basin, there is a foreback. So that would collect everything when they have the first flush, basically, is where all the heavy particulates are able to settle out. There'll be maintenance that will get cleaned out, you know, periodically throughout the year as it builds up. So there is, there is treatment before it goes into that. The majority of the, the actual flows that pond receives would be infiltrated. So under normal circumstances, there wouldn't be any flow at all going into the creek. There is an emergency overflow. That would be if there was, you know, one of these larger-than-100 story year storm event. So there would be an area for it to safely discharge. But overall, the site is designed for 100-year storm, to be kept on-site and infiltrated to the site. Again, as I noticed there, you know, the site is completely sand and gravel, so it's a perfect site for this case to use infiltration.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Let's get to CPL's memo. Liz, do you want to go through that?
Yeah, I'm going to try to be quick. I just have to say that Mr. Clemente's description of the process was really interesting and a little nostalgic because I grew up near gravel pits. Anyway, the one thing I do want to just touch on briefly has to do with noise. And so I'm going to start at the end of our memo, which is kind of a summary of, well, comment 20 talks about that the submittal, the applicant intends to retain vegetation on the site as mitigation for potential noise impact. So that was one thing. And we didn't have any further comments about the study, but we have some, there's some details, I think, that should be called out on the plan to show how the mitigation is, you know, that the trees are there instead of a blank area on the plan. So those are specific comments. And then one, at the prior meeting, I think, well, yeah, June 16th meeting, there was a, there was a part of the meeting where the understanding was, based on offline consultation after that, that Mr. Clemente's insights from the video would be incorporated into their official responses of the planning board. It wasn't really clear on the plan, so I just left that comment in the air. And then I spoke to our noise specialist, George Schmidt, trying to figure out what's the easiest, best, cleanest way to do a test, which I'm gathering now isn't preferred. And that's a comment number 23. George was basically saying, one approach to dealing with this would be to just have the code enforcement officer go to the site and take a sound measurement on the property boundary, which would be consistent with the noise code. So that was our latest recommendation on that. I've heard different recommendations from the project team. And my suggestion is, there are a lot of things being described in the air. And what is really helpful, I think, both to the planning board as a decision-making body and consultants, including the noise consultant, would be to have a written scope of what you were discussing in the middle of this for the testing. So a written scope would be very helpful. All the verbiage we hear, somebody has to write that down and just put it, you know, maybe it's a page, that I think would be helpful as part of an exemittal. So that would be my recommendation there.
And, yeah, my thought was, as an alternative approach, rather than having our, the town's building inspector do any of this kind of investigation, would be to have the applicant do some testing. And based on what we've heard tonight,
Yes.
Rather than at the site boundary, it would be standardized to a distance of 50 feet from the plant at various locations around the plant. And I think that probably makes a lot of sense.
I think it sounds good. I'm just saying it would be nice to have it as a written, maybe a page of
Right.
Something from Mr. Milliman, who's the noise specialist.
Right. And we can certainly do that. That makes sense for the record.
That would be great.
And so I'll just mention, so we are going to, in a couple of minutes, hopefully, get to the draft EAF Part II that you put together for us, Liz. But I think, based on the discussion tonight, we probably have enough information to go through the environmental assessment form.
I think so.
And then, you know, should we get to the point, at some point in the future, of a resolution of approval, that could be something that could be a condition, you know, to that resolution, I would think.
Agreed.
The sound testing as a condition.
Yeah, putting, well, a, a monitoring plan to be submitted.
Got it. Got it.
And then followed up with a sound, after-construction sound study.
Right. On the sound issue, in no opposition to the post-operation measurements to be submitted to the town, the issue of potential significant adverse noise or sound impacts, we, we propose, based on the sound study we've done, the answer would be, there are none, because it shows it's not above ambient at the property line, but subject to a mitigation measure or a condition to a potential approval of doing the post-operational study to be submitted to the town. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. So we'll get to the environmental assessment forum momentarily. So Liz, any other?
I'm just going to make a general comment. So there, there was a very detailed Greenway Preservation Area note on the plans. And there is some areas that are outlined on the plans. And basically, almost all of my comments about that are pretty minor plan-specific things to just define it better. That's, that's really it. Shows some distances, some verbiage. And also, there are areas that are identified as tree preservation, but when you look at the plan set, it doesn't show trees there. And again, not looking for somebody to go out and do a tree survey, but to be able to outline an area of, you know, trees. So that there's something there that is clear on the plans that's being preserved, instead of just blank. So I think those are pretty cut and dried, and I don't, I don't really think there's a reason to go into those in any detail. Because you'll all go to sleep, and we need you to stay awake for the full EAF. I mean, unless there's another comment.
Or unless there are questions from board members.
Yeah.
But just looking at what you were talking about, it looks like from, in particular, pages four and five of your memo, it really gets into a lot of technical detail about how the plans can actually be revised to meet the needs of the board. And it's kind of like a cookbook, a checklist of just going through them and doing them. So it doesn't seem like rocket science or any, anything that's really difficult.
And again, nothing that couldn't be, if, if, if offline consultation is still authorized, if there's any really specific question that the applicant's team has, I'm sure we can communicate about that and figure it out.
Yeah. And it's still authorized. Yeah.
So I can't really think of any.
Any specific questions from board members, in addition to what we've already been talking about?
No, I brought up the issue with noise last month. I think the suggestions and the approach that was outlined tonight was, was acceptable. That was the crux of my comment, was trying to come up with a scope that was reasonable. So the fact that we achieved that, I'm happy to hear. I threw out the suggestion last month, but I'm glad to hear that there's a scope that is reasonable that we can achieve. So I think mission accomplished there.
Yeah. The board always has good ideas.
So we can always come back to the memo if we need to, but shall we go ahead and have Liz go through the draft EAF Part II that she so kindly put together for us?
Any questions at all about the memo? No? Okay.
Again, there might be some that are related to things on the EAF as well.
Okay.
So we can just combine it all together at this point.
Okay. So I'm looking at full EAF, page one of 10. The first item is impact on land, and that is marked with a yes. And just so the board's familiar with the way this is done, the first column, no or small impact may occur. If it just has a check in it, that means there's no impact. If it has a check with an asterisk next to it, in that no or small impact may occur column, that means it's a small impact. So for example, one, if you go down to question F, the proposed action may result in increased erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal, including from treatment by herbicides. And that's marked with a check and a star. That means it's a small impact, per my view as a consultant. Limited grading is required to create ramp for material bins and stormwater basin. Any questions? No? Okay. Impact on geological features, top of page two, item two, no impact. Impact on surface water, it's marked yes. And there are a whole bunch of impacts under no or small impact, but they're all no impact, except for item three H, under impacts on water. And that's a, proposed action may cause soil erosion or otherwise source of stormwater discharge. And what I've written in there is limited grading is required to create ramp for material bins and stormwater basin, and that would be a small impact. Then I'm moving on to page three, impact on groundwater. It's marked yes. And there are either no or small impacts, and there are three small impacts at four A. Water supply well for estimated 10,000 gallon per day use. Four D, construction of small septic system for SSDS for one toilet, that's a small impact. And item F, four F, location of propane gas tanks in an enclosure, they're above ground in an enclosure. So all small impacts there. Impact on flooding is marked no.
Do you want, do you want comments as we're going along, page by page?
Yes. I'm sorry. Am I going too fast?
Well, no, it's, it's up to you. If you want to go through the whole thing, and then we can come back.
Well, actually.
Or is it easier to go page by page?
Maybe it is easier to go page by page. So.
Okay.
Should we go back to page one? Does anybody?
Well, no. Just if there's anything. I just had something actually on page two.
Okay.
On surface water, number three. Three I is, the proposed action may affect the water quality of any water bodies within or downstream of the site. And you marked it as no impact. And I was just wondering if maybe we should put an asterisk there for small impacts with a reference to the possibility of contaminants getting into Clove Creek if the stormwater basin isn't operating as it should be. So small impact would be all that I would go with. What do people think about that?
Would agree.
Thought it might make sense to just reference the Clove Creek. Is there noise coming from somebody's?
Yeah, that's me. I'm sorry. My computer started talking to me.
Help that isn't AI.
Yeah.
Could get into trouble that way. All right. And then on page four, groundwater, similar to that one I just mentioned, on H, other impacts. I thought about adding this into H, possible contamin-
Wait, you're on page four?
I'm on page four, groundwater now. Oh, I'm sorry, three. Sorry, number four.
Okay, good.
Page three, number four. Excuse me.
Okay, great. Thanks. H.
And that's for H, other impacts, saying something like possible contaminants from, from stormwater trucks over principal primary aquifer, and then checking that as a small impact.
From possible contamination from stormwater.
Trucks, et cetera.
Trucks?
Trucks, T-R-U-C-K-S, or other sources, over principal primary aquifer, principal common, primary aquifer. And then marking that as a small impact.
Or, and that would be small. Stormwater.
That's my question. Is it stormwater runoff or trucks?
Well, if there is contamination from trucks, it would most likely come through stormwater flow, wouldn't it?
Okay. Understood. So the issue then is the trucks on site, potential contaminants from trucks.
Yeah.
And those being carried through stormwater.
Yeah, yeah.
But small impact.
Yeah, that's what my intent was, yeah.
Potential, so potential contaminants from stormwater sediment from trucks?
Something like that. So, all right.
Okay.
So you want to go ahead with, you could continue with flooding?
And that's small. Okay. Anything on page four? So on page, I didn't do page four.
Let's see.
I think I started to. Did you have anything?
You didn't go, so you, you did flooding, so you wanted to just go through, let's see, starting with six, air?
Yep. Anybody have any other comments on pages one through three? No? So page four is impacts on air, and that's marked yes. And item six F, which is other impacts, indicates the proposed action requires a New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, New York State DEC, air registration permit, which application is pending, and that's marked as a small impact. And then the next one, seven, impacts on plants and animals, is marked yes. And that goes from the bottom of page four onto the top of page five. And under seven impacts on plants and animals, almost all the impacts are noted as no impact, except for seven G on the top of page five, is a small impact regarding construction will be limited to the hibernation season and snake fence to be installed between forest and project site. And that is related to, G reads, the proposed action may substantially interfere with nesting slash breeding, foraging, or overwintering habitat for the predominant species that occupy the project site. So that's a small impact, and there's mitigation implemented as shown on the plan. And that's what's described in the note, that construction's limited to hibernation season, and snake fence would be installed between the forest and the project site. And then item eight is marked.
Let's go back to page four.
Okay.
Because earlier under number seven, plants and animals, I thought there probably should be another reference under B, in terms of the habitat used by any rare threatened or endangered species.
A small.
So I would put that small. So I would put that small, and just list both the northern-
And then list the mitigation.
The northern, well, no, but list the northern long-eared bat-
I got you.
-along with the timber rattlesnake in that section. We've already gotten like habitat assessments of those.
Do you want to have northern long-eared bat and timber rattlesnake also listed on G?
Oh, probably, yeah, I actually had written in timber rattlesnake on that one, because it seemed like the snake fence is the one that was really, and I guess actually the construction limited to hibernation season also relates to the bat.
Yeah, we can write them both in.
I guess both of them.
And then we're more specific there. Okay.
And again, this just, when you get to the drafting of a determination of significance, that can be just expanded a little bit in that document.
Anything else on seven, impact on plants and animals? Okay, so now I'm on, we should be looking at page five, bottom, impact on agricultural resources is marked no, because the site doesn't seem to have any agricultural resources. Then going to the top of page six, impact on aesthetic resources is marked yes. And there are a number of items marked there for small impacts, and I'll try to just touch on these briefly. So item A, proposed action may be visible from any officially designated federal, state, or local scenic or aesthetic resource. And then I've typed in, proposed action may be visible from the Route 9 scenic gateway corridor and New York State Bike Route 9, which I think you're all aware of from the cell tower application. Then under C, I, the proposed action may be visible from publicly accessible vantage points seasonally. And so that's marked with a small impact. And then item D, under nine also, the situation or activity in which the viewers are engaged while viewing the proposed action is both of those items, D, little I and little I-I, routine travel by residents, including travel to and from work, and recreational or tourism-based activities. And so those are also marked as small impacts. And then going down to F, there are similar projects visible within the following distance of the proposed project. And I've put a rectangle around zero to one half mile, because there are some other, you know, gravel and other similar operations there. And that's also smart, marked with a small, with a star for small impact. So that's all under impact on aesthetic resources. And there are one, two, three, four, five, small impacts under that, all related to the scenic gateway corridor on Route 9 and the New York State Bike Route 9. Any comments or suggestions about that? No?
No.
Okay. Ten, impact on historic or archaeological resources, and that is marked no. Then moving on to page seven, impact on open space and recreation, it's marked yes, with I have noted one small impact in the draft I've prepared for you. At eleven E, other impacts. And I've written in there, proposed action may be visible from the Route 9 scenic gateway corridor and New York State Bike Route 9. So it's kind of a repeat of the prior. Any other suggestions on eleven, open space and recreation? Okay. Critical environmental area is marked yes. And item 12A, proposed action may result in reduction in the quantity of the resource or characteristic which was the basis for the designation of the CEA. And that small impact is related to water supply well for estimated 10,000 gallons per day of use. And that's, the CEA is the aquifer, I guess I don't specify that, do I? I'll add a note about that.
Oh, yeah, you might as well put a reference to that.
Designated CEA.
And then in B, you marked B as no impact, but I was thinking for consistency purposes, we might want to just repeat the same wording we had-
Yep, yep.
-in the earlier on groundwater resources with a small impact.
Yep.
Whatever the wording was that I had on that one.
Okay.
That was-
All right, let's see. All right, we're on page eight. Impact on transportation, I wrote no, because they really don't have a big volume of traffic. Impact on energy, also no. And then at the bottom of page eight, impact on noise, odor, and light, that's marked yes. And the items 15A, B, and C are marked as no impact. And then going on to page nine, items 15, I guess it would be D, E, and F, I'm sorry, D and E are no impact, and F is other impacts, concerns about possible noise impacts pending clarity about retention of site vegetation, and that's marked with a small. And that was because more clarification is needed to show the preserved areas. That would help with noise and visual.
Yeah, and that can all be expanded in the draft determination of significance, as well as the post-construction noise monitoring plan, that'll be part of the, part of the mitigation, so to speak. Or not mitigation, so much as follow-up confirmation.
Right. Yeah. And then impact on human health, that's marked no. I didn't think that any of those items under 16 were pertinent to the project. And then I'm moving on to page 10, consistency with community plans, and I've marked yes. And the item that I marked under 17 is 17H, other, and I've written proposed action may be visible from Route 9 scenic gateway corridor and New York State Bike Route 9. And again, that's marked as a small impact. Any questions on that one? Should I duplicate any of those? I didn't, I didn't think anything else really applied under 17.
It looks fine.
Okay. And then 18, consistency with community character, it's marked yes, and I forgot to put the checks in the boxes.
Yes, I was going to mention that.
I noticed that at the last minute tonight. And the item that is marked as a small impact is 18G, other impacts, proposed action may be visible from the Route 9 scenic gateway corridor and New York State Bike Route 9. And again, put a check mark there and a star for a small impact. Any comments on anything on page 10?
No. Dominic or Dennis, do you have any, any ideas or suggestions on the EAF that we went through?
Have the comments?
So what I'm thinking here is, well, I was just going to sort of reiterate. So the CPL memo has some pretty thorough detailed suggestions for adding some site plan revisions and notations, but they're all really pretty technical in nature, and like I said before, sort of like following a cookbook, fairly easy to do, assuming the applicant is basically in line with the concept of following those recommendations. So after reviewing the EAF Part II tonight, and with some revisions, it's kind of looking to me like this is pointing toward a neg deck rather than the pos deck. So just wanted to get some confirmation from the board as to how that's looking. And if so, I think we can authorize some further things to be done for the August meeting.
John?
Yep.
So we did talk about in the EAF Part II, several small, what we're calling small impacts related to surface water, groundwater. There were comments raised by the public about their concerns about that resource located on the Clove Creek. There's a, it's within a hundred-year floodplain area associated with the creek. There's federal wetlands in the area, critical environmental area, aquifer protection zone. What are the board's thoughts to investigating this further? I mean, we, we had recommendations made by the public, and I think potentially reasonable ones. What are the board's thoughts to further investigating whether or not this is an industrial use? What are the board's thoughts to further investigating that?
Felix, you have any thoughts?
Well, I think that, you know, one of the things that came up that the public brought up that we didn't hear before is the idea of this hydrogeologist being part of helping us to look at this. And something that I think we should also ask the applicant if they have any ideas on that also. But I'm not sure if, I know we use the hydrogeologist for the Commerce Center, but that seems to have a lot more issues than this one may have. But that's something I think I would like to hear from you guys also, on the potential impact that they're talking about.
Sure. And I would concur. Comparing this project to a, look, I heard it at one meeting, it seemed to be a fairly large proposed warehouse project. It is really in the nature of apples to oranges. This is, again, a one acre plus greenway preservation area, but principally one acre commercial redevelopment. On the issue of both surface water and groundwater impacts, and we appreciate the board's review of Part II of the EAF, and a number of items identified and noted as small impacts, we've submitted technical information on those both surface and groundwater impacts. That includes the pre and post stormwater calculations, details regarding the stormwater basin that's been reviewed by our consulting engineer, the design for that to address both water quantity as well as quality. We've given you details about the proposed operations. We've stayed away from the Clove Creek. We've incorporated greenway preservation around that resource. We've identified the aquifer protection overlay regs within the town code. We're in compliance with that. This is an industrial use, but the site is owned, planned industrial. Given all of that, quite frankly, from a technical standpoint, those issues have been adequately addressed. It would be appropriate to identify those in the Part II, as the board has done, to identify those impacts, but properly characterize them as small. They have been addressed. You've done your job in terms of protecting those resources for this proposal, but we don't think at this point further investigation or analysis is warranted on the record. And we do not think that retention of a separate hydrogeologist, in addition to the consultants that you've reviewed thus far, for this project, for this application's warranted on the record.
For the record, I was not comparing that project to this one. I was only raising the features on the site. I don't want to be-
Yeah, and if I could chime in.
I don't want to go that, yeah.
I, I'm not aware, we, we, you know, CPL has not asked any hydrogeologists to look at this. What I'm not aware of is whether the applicant has a hydrogeologist that could take a look and provide some kind of, something specific to hydrogeology, if there's a specialist that they have, that could just weigh in on some of the commentary at the public meeting. So that's one thought.
Right.
To have something more on the record.
Right. So-
From a specialist.
Right.
And I'm not, I'm not suggesting Paul Ruben, I'm saying if the applicant's folks have somebody that would like to put together a response to, a hydrogeologist's response to some of the comments that the public made. That might clear it up in terms of the board.
And if I may jump in, speaking to our engineer, in this case, would you think a hydrogeologist would be necessary? Or something that, you know, given the impacts that we're looking at?
I mean, given the impacts, for stormwater, they're providing the proper mitigation and taking care of that. I think as far as an impact of any discharge from the actual plant themselves, I think the applicant has discussed that, you know, everything's basically self-contained within, in the batch plant itself. So I think, right now, I think there's not really that much that could potentially impact the groundwater or surface water that we haven't already addressed. I mean, the board's obviously going to make their own opinion on that, but as a technical, I think that the applicant, everything that applicant has provided has addressed all of our technical comments.
And I guess I also feel that, just to add on to that, if there's better definition of the areas adjacent to the site and areas adjacent to the creek in particular, it would be helped that they be defined, that they say, this is the distance of this preservation area from the creek, that kind of thing. And that's just simple, you know, delineating those areas to define what they are.
If I could add, I agree, Liz, with your comment, and we will do that. But I do want to make a couple of points. DEC has regulations for the protection of streams and wetlands. Hundred-foot setbacks is the general rule. This project is abiding by those setbacks and plus, plus more, you know, so I, you know, we're talking substantially back from the hundred-foot, that's why there's a hundred-foot setback, to protect the stream. I think as the town consultant mentioned, you know, we have also proposed a retention system for the site, that there's nothing being discharged. And so we've designed it for a hundred-year flood, and I also respect Chairperson Cantor's comment that the reason for a small impact is, you know, kind of a what-if, what, you know, what if it were breached, right? So there's, so that, I think that was the spirit of the comment of a small impact. But, you know, we can get into a lot of hypotheticals, and I respect the fact that hypotheticals could come true. But at this point, and again, I think this gets to the point about the size of the project, I think when you look at larger projects, you're seeing usually collection systems, you're usually seeing some piping, you're seeing some discharge. But in this, this project's been designed in a manner that there isn't a discharge. It's respecting the regulations on setback. And so I am struggling a little bit with the idea that, because this kind of falls into the air comments that were made too, you know, you know, you should address the air emissions, but we're, there are no air emissions. You should address the discharge emissions, but the whole application is designed around that there is not going to be a discharge. So, you know, I just wanted to add that comment.
And just one thing, I'm glad you mentioned the hundred-foot setbacks. Again, that's another thing, it, you know, like from the stream, it, so just, that's the kind of stuff to show, that's, it's just very helpful to demonstrate it to the board, and then if the public has concerns, they can look at it.
Right. We can put something together to address that. We'll call out from the technical record-
They're all planned revisions.
It's already there. We can call that out and put that into one submission for you.
That would be helpful. Also, that's partly why I thought the overview of the plant operations document was so helpful, because it did talk about contaminants that, you know, are basically recycled as part of the plant and truck operation, and it gave quite a bit of detail about that. So I was very comfortable after reading that document. Anthony, if you had any specific parts of the EAF Part II that we went through that you think should be different, you can certainly bring those up, and-
Based on the information we have, no. I think we're, I don't recommend any changes, but it was, it was a question that was brought up, and I felt like we hadn't talked-
up, and I felt like we hadn't talked about it at the meeting, so I raised a comment just so we could talk about it and get it out there in front of the public. So, wasn't necessarily suggesting a change, I was suggesting we talk about it.
Yeah, and there are a number of things that are covered in the applicant's response portion of the submission of June 25th, which talk about things like stormwater and stormwater runoff in general, and Clove Creek, and possible impacts due to improper management of stormwater or processing of water. The aquifer, in particular, the comments by the public had brought up significant withdrawals of water from the aquifer, which, in comparison, in the applicant's response, turns out to be actually no more than many other users of the aquifer water use with a single-family home even. And, you know, so going through the whole list of visual impacts, the screening, the timber rattlesnake, the fencing, I mean...
And the only paved area on the site is the handicap parking space. Everything else is dirt or sand or...
Right.
Whatever. Surface is there.
So, I mean, based on all that and the review of the EAF Part Two, I'm comfortable with asking CPL to go ahead and assuming that the plan set is revised according to CPL's recommendations and submitted for the August meeting, authorize Liz at CPL to prepare a revised draft EAF Part Two based on the board's review tonight. And then completing an EAF Part Three, which would point towards a draft NAG deck, so also preparing a draft NAG deck for the board's consideration at the August 14th meeting, including appropriate coordination with Dennis Lynch, M.J. So, if somebody would be willing to make that motion, we could go ahead with that.
So moved.
Felix moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
That was Bob. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that carries seven to zero. So, another discussion point is whether the board should authorize our attorney Dominic Codisco to prepare a draft resolution of perhaps preliminary, or maybe it should be preliminary and conditional, I don't know, approval for the board's consideration at the August 14th meeting? Or should we wait until the secret process is fully completed and the site plan set revised for CPL's memo? I think we have an option there that we could, sometimes we've authorized draft resolutions to be provided at the same time that we're getting the final secret documents before the board for consideration. And if the secret documents are approved, then we would have a document, a resolution to, for the board to consider following that secret determination. So, I'll go around the table and see what people think about that idea. How about Dominic? Dominic, what do you think?
Generally of the opinion that I can prepare it and the board can consider it if they're comfortable with adopting it at that time, or if there's further work that needs to be done, either in connection with the resolution or the secret documents, at least a draft will be prepared at that point.
Any other thoughts, Dennis?
No, like I said, most of my comments are addressed at this point, so I think it would be appropriate to draft a resolution, if the board feels comfortable.
And Liz?
I, I would like to see quite a few of the plan refinements done so that the proposed action is really clearly shown. I think that's pretty central.
Right.
So, and they're not difficult, you know, if I could draw, I could do them myself, but I can't draw. That's why we have engineers to do that kind of work, so.
But, so assuming, assuming that, okay, we've authorized the secret documents and assuming we get through those at the 14th meeting of August, and assuming the applicant meets the deadline of, what is that, Debbie? Fourth of August meeting? It's July...
Yeah, it's written on the agenda, hold on a second.
July...
It is July 30th.
30th. And the board is satisfied with those revisions, then we have a resolution, a draft resolution to go ahead and review and possibly approve. If not, if those things don't happen, then there's no harm done, and we don't have to approve the resolution.
It's a potential home run.
Yeah. Which is a little bit more incentive for the applicant to get all those revisions on the site plans and notes in by the submission date. So, would someone like to make a motion authorizing the planning board attorney to prepare a draft resolution of, and in this one, should it be preliminary and conditional final approval, do you think? Or it could just be preliminary?
I think it'll depend on the state of the plans as they come in for the, for the next meeting, to be quite honest. And so, if we have indication that there's no outstanding comments based on those plans or they're fairly minimal, we can draft it such as to include both preliminary and conditional final. But it could be stepped down from that back to preliminary if there's outstanding issues.
Okay, that sounds reasonable. So the motion could include that kind of wording. This would be for the proposed century aggregates concrete batch plant at 107 Route 9 for the board's consideration at the August 14th meeting.
I'll move that.
Second.
Felix moves it. Fred seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries seven to zero. Okay. We spent quite a bit of time on this one, but I think we got through quite a bit, and we'll see you all at the August meeting.
Thank the board for its time. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
One other thing, if we could, on that timeline.
Oh, sure.
Mark did remind me. Again, just, just to clarify, we want, we want to comply with the board's procedure. If we can discuss these issues, the plans, review, make sure we're all on that with the engineer or with CPL, prior to the submission date, we understand once the submission's made on July 30th, no further discussions, but open communication up until that submission date?
Yeah, and as long as it's engineer to engineer...
Correct.
Or attorney to attorney, but not attorney and engineer to engineer.
But I'm, but I'm just a planner.
Or planner, well...
Okay, I'm just, just qualifying.
All right, so you'll have, you'll have to hire a planner to have a planner...
He's willing to speak to me in spite of that.
We just want to meet with you because most of the comments, obviously, outstanding are yours, and we just want to make sure we're answering in the manner you wish.
Yeah, we'll have a little online meeting.
Well, why don't we just, let's meet in person?
Oh, in person, it's fine.
So we can redline the plans.
Okay.
And everybody understands.
Sounds like a good idea.
Okay.
Sometimes I almost think of Mark as a planner, and I don't mean that as a negative.
Right.
Thank you again. You just got promoted.
Why don't you just leave before we get into trouble? So rather than take an official break, why don't we keep going, and then if anyone needs to get up and stretch or whatever, you can just do that. Let me just take a minute here to get things organized for the next item. So this isn't a formal break, but...
Oh, yeah, no, it's not, I mean, it's really just discussion, I think.
Okay. I think we're still awake, and we have a quorum still. So the next item on the agenda is Fishkill Self-Storage, 1292 Route 9D, special use permit and site development plan, and board is to review the revised draft preliminary final environmental impact statement, revised June 26, 2025, prepared by CPL, town planner for the board's comments and consideration. So, Liz, I guess we will turn it back over to you to kind of review the materials that were circulated. I know you had a memo that kind of summed up what you did. And then we've got a very long revised preliminary F.E.I.S., revised by CPL, that we want to go through in as much detail as possible tonight. So, go ahead and...
Okay, so I have a memo of June 26, which is the memo I sent when I transmitted the revised draft preliminary final environmental impact statement, or revised draft P.F.E.I.S., and it was revised June 26. And it was revised for the purpose of then having you wade through it or read through, and that's why I tried to get it out in time, so that you would have some time to look at it. Let's see. So this is because at the June 12th meeting, the board determined that the document that the applicant had revised, the revised P.F.E.I.S., was insufficient, and so I worked on that. Let's see. A lot of what I did was to add back, CPL had put comments in bold in a version of the P.F.E.I.S. that had been handed to the board, and then the applicant was asked to take it and, you know, make whatever final changes they wanted to. And as a result, I think all or most of those comments came out. So, part of what I had prepared for you was to put the comments back in, those were in bold, and, and I'm just going to kind of walk you quickly through where they can be found, so that you're sort of familiar. There were not any comments, there's an item that is Chapter One that I provided you, which is very brief, and that is the project description, the initial part of it, and there were no comments from CPL in that. And then Chapter Two, there were quite a few comments in there. And what I tried to do to have they stand out was to have those be done in bold, so I hope you were able to find them, like if you just leafed through the pages, you would find bold text and read it.
This time they were in blue boldface, which was nice.
They were blues?
Well, they were in color, so...
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, and the track change, oh, okay.
Yeah, and I, there's no way I could have even looked at the clean version and realized what was going on, so...
The clean version didn't have them in bold?
Well, I don't know, but I only looked at the track changes version, because that's the only way I could figure out what was going on.
I see. Okay.
And I hope everyone else figured that out, too.
Okay. I see what you're saying, to follow, right, the lineage of that. Anyway, so there were bold changes on, in Chapter Two, on page 2-11. Some more on page 2-16, and I don't want to sit and read them through to you. And then there were a whole series of them on pages 218 through 2, 2 hyphen 25. And originally, I had written all of those together. I was having a nice flow of thought, and a lot of issues just kept coming up from that section. So I wrote them all sort of at the end of the section, and I now know that that wasn't very helpful to the board, so. Recently, I have started working on a revision to put those in a sequence where the bold comment that I am making as your consultant falls right after the comment that it's subject to, so...
And each of your, each individual item had references to exactly where they actually should have been placed, so it shouldn't be too hard.
It did, but it meant you would have had to look back through, so I realize...
The other thing is, since there are so many numerical references to responses and comments and blah, 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 it was like beginning to get impossible to really follow, especially when they were out of sequence of where they were supposed to be.
Agreed. And, and honestly, even when I was writing this, I had to put up the DEIS on one screen and the P.F.E.I.S. that was the latest in a middle screen, and the right screen was the one I was writing in, because, you know, even though I'm familiar with these documents, I had to track back to, what was my DEIS comment? How was it responded to by the applicant's final EIS? And if I had an issue with their response, you know? So, the next version that you will get will have it all more appropriately sequenced and easier for you to follow. And I don't know if you want me to get into points or to open it right up to the planning board, because I could touch on a few things, but I don't know if that's...
Yeah, if you think there are some that you thought were particularly significant to go over with the board. But then, I know I have a number of specific revisions suggested, and I'm sure other board members might as well.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just go by way of example, just to kind of, so I'm looking at the document that I prepared for you, and on page 2-16, there's the beginning of a bolded comment at the bottom. And if you go back to page 2-15, I just want to walk you through the sequence here. There was a comment C8, so that was a comment from CPL. And the concern in here has to do with the fact that there's only two employees and 333 users, and how the operation worked with things being done online, the tasks that those two employees might have with a facility like that, and that, my point at the end of that was, there was minimal interaction between the employees and the public, so minimal social or public interaction. And then there's the applicant's response. And then I, I basically came back in the bold comment and kind of reiterated some of those issues about the little very minor interaction. And the whole point of that was to talk about the proposed action would have an impact on community character. So I was trying to, trying to introduce the concept of community character, because I think it's a very important central point in this corner of town. You know, this is an area where people walk off the bridge, turn the corner, maybe go into Beacon, maybe folks from Beacon are, are, there is a fair bit of pedestrian activity there. So anyway, that, that was kind of the point of that sequence, and I'm just going to walk you through another example, and see if it has a different issue here, wait a minute.
Yeah, there's some that are much longer than that.
Yes, there are some that are very, very much longer than that, but I want to get something that's a little bit more... But I want to get something that's a little bit more pertinent. Hang on a second here. Um, hang on a second here. I'm going to dive into something that has a little bit more to do with the zoning aspect of things. Okay. Okay, so on page 2-23, this is in the middle of a series of bold comments. And at the bottom of page 2-23, there's CPL PFEIS Comment 9. And this has to do with reasoning for viewing the proposed self-storage use as a more intense and less limited or less restricted use. And it also relates it to the traffic impact study. And so then it talks a little bit about that Institute of Traffic Engineers has a trip generation manual, and they base that on intensity of use. And the land use code for a mini warehouse is one of several uses listed under their industrial headings. So I'm trying to tie together how self-storage, similar to the zoning in the town of Fishkill, is included into areas that are more intensive businesses or industrial uses. And then I'll just see if I can find one that's a little closer to... Then on page 2-24, it's really most of the page. And it's, it's listed on page 2-24 as CPL PFEIS Comment 10. And it refers back to, hang in there. In PFEIS Comment Response 13, at PFEIS, page 2-14, second paragraph, "The response expresses a misunderstanding about zoning patterns related to the three most intensive residential use districts." So I'm refuting how the applicant's response in the EIS tries to make it seem like this use fits here. And my arguments, and you'll see them again and again, are kind of bringing you back to the logic of the zoning in the town of Fishkill. And so I do reiterate that the three most intensive non-residential use districts... And if you look at the zoning and look at the logic of the zoning, every time you see this comment, I think you'll start to, it'll, it'll make sense to you. There really is a logic to the town zoning. So the PSC, Planned Shopping Center, General Business, and PI zoning districts are proclaimed to be the three most intensive non-residential use districts and renders the self-storage and intensive non-residential use is belied by the fact that all three identified districts also permit residential uses. So that was a kind of a comment against that point. And then it goes on to say, "The order of the non-residential districts is set forth in zoning. In prior comments, in, in the zoning tables, as a logical progression, and each of the non-residential zoning districts permits some form of residential use," which is kind of a normal thing, I think, if you look at other communities in their zoning. It isn't just purely business. Workers have to live somewhere, the managers have to live somewhere. The person maybe who started the business lives nearby. So it's not uncommon for an intensive non-residential use district to allow certain forms of residential use. In fact, a lot of the intensive non-residential or business or industrial land use districts sometimes will allow multifamily or lower densities. So there's logic in there. I don't want to sit here and read it out loud to you. But, but those are some of the points that you will see a few times. Hang on a second here. I'm trying to think if there's another example that would help you understand a little bit more about the logic of the comments. Because I know they're pretty technical, but I know that you can grab them because you've been doing this for a long time, looking at various uses and reviewing them and approving them. In, on page 2-29, CPL PFEIS Comment 12, which is a response to PFEIS Comment Response 21. There were several public comments that were summarized by the PFEIS preparers as, quote, "Self-storage uses are less beneficial to the town than other potential uses of the site." And that, quote, "A self-storage use is inappropriate in the location between an interstate highway and a single-family residential neighborhood." Although in, and then it continues, "Although included in the land use section, these comments appear to pertain to community character. Excerpts of responses from PFEIS Comment Response 21 are summarized below and should be considered as comments about community character." And so some of these say, "The list, the listed uses for the RB, Restricted Businesses RB, are so far from what is being proposed by the self-storage company." Another one is, "Storage developments do not foster any kind of community engagement, sense of place or culture." And another one is that the use would not create any substantial employment. So there, there is a lot in here about community character. There is a lot of, here about the progression of uses as laid out in the logic of the zoning of the town of Fishkill. And I think community character is very important. Impacts on community character are, and correct me if I'm wrong here, are, can be an impact. And it's kind of a soft impact, but it's a serious impact. So I guess it, look at the comments and picture this corner and whatever you think of it. I know I've said a lot, just from observation of that area of the world. Maybe spend some time in that area and just watch what's occurring there. Is it, is it just people whizzing by? Are there kids on bicycles? Are there people walking, coming off of Newburgh Beacon Bridge and going back?
Well, I know several of us go by there quite often, so we've had opportunities to soak in what you're talking about.
And on the question, you know, as to its relevance to this particular application, I think it's actually directly relevant because the Board, as part of the application, is being asked to grant a special permit under Section 15019B, you know, which includes a finding, Board, as to how this particular use fits in with the surrounding area. And so I think that this analysis included in the FEIS is appropriate and will support whatever determination that the Board makes in connection with that.
And I have to be honest, I don't, you know, I looked through the comprehensive plan update. I don't, there were some statements about community character. And so what I tried to do in one of the comments was to pool together, and this is a very long comment that I did. It begins at the bo, bottom of page 2-29 and goes through...
Oh, yeah.
To the middle of page 2-32. And the whole point of that has to do with the character of that area from my perspective as a planning professional. So, so it touches on characterization of the site and environs, noting, you know, text about urban trails, greenways, Olmsted, and open spaces. And so I think it describes, what does it mean? What does community character mean? And then I tried to provide some description, beginning on page 231, 2-31. Near the top, it says, "The following description of the community as a whole is from the introduction of the comprehensive plan update adopted May 3, 2023, and provides a sense of character of the town of Fishkill." So I try to give examples of descriptions of community character that are pertinent to the town of Fishkill generally, but also to this area of town. And I think, because it's a sort of a, I don't know what's the right word to say. It's not, it's not like a hard-edged thing, community character. Some of it has to do with how you view your community. How do you think your neighbors or the people that live in this area view this part of the community? How do visitors view it? That kind of thing, so... It's a little fuzzy, but it's very important, I think. It's something we don't think about every day, so... Anyway, I don't want to drone on about these comments. I don't know if there's anything else that anybody had questions about or comments about, or were there any things that I wrote that you just read and went, "What the heck is you talking about?" That kind of thing.
Well, again, the interesting thing is that these comments should be nothing new to the Board because it was already presented to the Board and then was not included in the previous version of the final EIS that the applicant provided. And so that's why we asked Liz to take it and basically re-insert all of those good comments that really have a lot of meaning in terms of the, especially the context of the use. And I think the use is probably one of the most critical parts of this proposal, being that we have to make a determination regarding the proposed use under Section 15019B.
Yes.
So there's a lot about traffic, there's a lot about lighting, there's a lot about landscaping, all kinds of things. But again, I think the core of, of the FEIS, which will then result in the planning Board's findings and determination of what to do with it all is really key with the use aspect of the proposal.
We've had a traffic study, and we keep on talking about foot traffic. Is there any type of estimate of how many people actually cross that bridge? And how many people go down that way?
It's a great question.
There probably are.
I mean, if, you know, I drive by there, I don't see people crossing that bridge. I go down, you know, we have the, you know, the bridge over Hudson. The people really want to cross. But I don't see that many people crossing that bridge. So I just have a question with that.
Or walking on sidewalks in that area.
You got it.
Yep.
Well, I think, yeah, there are a lot of...
I'm not saying that, but again, I don't...
There, actually, I've, I've noticed a lot of people walking along there. I noticed a lot of bikers, bicyclists. So if you live around there and you're constantly going back and forth into and out of Beacon, you really do get a sense of all that.
But I'm sure the Bridge Authority has something that...
Yeah, it's, it's a good question.
Yeah.
Would satisfy my mind somewhat.
Right. And I, I mean, whoever set up the trail between two cities, they must have had justification to get the designation in the first place, so...
Well, I used to go by ferry.
What?
Yeah.
We used to go by ferry.
There could be a lot more people on bicycles now without the ferry in service.
I mean, theoretically, the trail goes from the waterfront, Newburgh, up through Newburgh, across the bridge, and then down through Fishkill and Beacon, back to the water, so...
That was quite a shock to see that the ferry was being taken out of service. And I didn't realize that the dock was that damaged from recent storms. But, but they probably, I don't want to speak badly about any authorities, but they must be considering the economic return of the ferry as a big part of that as well, but...
Right.
They're also saying the bus traffic took it away from, they have a bus, a shuttle bus.
Yeah.
A shuttle bus.
Now, they canceled the ferry.
Right.
But one of the reasons was the drop traffic, you know, on the ferry. And the other one was the shuttle bus is now picking up a lot of that traffic.
Ah, I gotcha.
As per the paper.
Right.
Any other sections like that that you want to highlight, Liz?
Uh, really not that I can think of. And I've also scribbled in this one, so it's harder to read. Because I was trying to fix it for you. I'm trying to find one where I dive into the, hang on a second here. There, okay. Hang on a second here. I would like to find one where it talks a little bit more about 150-19B. All right. Let me just touch base on bottom of page 2-37. There are a couple different comments that get into detail about the progression of the zoning districts. So this is, this is bottom of page 2-37, CPL PFEIS Comment 17 to PFEIS Comment Response 28. And this is about, originally, I had made a comment. I had made a comment that the use is not listed in the RB district. Self-storage is also not listed in the LHC, Local Historic Center, and PB, Planned Business Zoning Districts. And these districts, the LHC, RB, and PB are the first three districts listed in the Schedule of Regulations for Non-Residential Districts. And basically, it goes on to say, "LHC, which is Local Historic Center, is the most restrictive and least intense. Planned Business is somewhat less restrictive and somewhat more intense." And then it kind of goes on. So I had made that comment, and then the applicant made a response to it. And then I made another response to that at the bottom of page 2-37 that says, "The comment explains where in the progression of the zoning districts that self-storage is not allowed. For example, it's not allowed in LHC, RB, and PB. The site is in the RB, or Restricted Business District." So it's right in that lineup of the least restrictive zoning districts, Local Historic, Restricted Business, and Planned Business. That's where self-storage is proposed, but it isn't allowed there. However, self-storage is permitted in three other districts. Planned Shopping Center, or PSC, GB, or General Business, and PI, Planned Industry. And again, that's, the first three that I mentioned are the least restrictive. And the PSC, GB, and PI, Planned Shopping Center, General Business, and Planned Industry, are the most intense land use districts where self-storage is allowed. So there are plenty of parcels where somebody could put self-storage, and it would be allowed either by right or by special permit. And I know that I detail that in here for those three districts. So there are plenty of opportunities to do self-storage in other zoning districts. And the general concept is that proposing this use in the Restricted Business District just flies in the face of the logic of the zoning, how the community is planned. You know, there was a comprehensive plan before the most recent one. And based on that, some zoning was changed or reoriented. And that zoning set forth like a logic for where do we put things in our town? And where do we not put them? So I try to go through that so that you can understand sort of the backbone of the zoning that you're dealing with when you're thinking about, does this use belong here? And for what reasons might it, and for what reasons it shouldn't belong? And I know that there aren't a whole lot of detailed comments about each of the four prongs of... prongs of 150-19B.
19B.
Thank you.
But they can get to that.
Right. All the logic is kind of in there in a more explanatory way, and then it's going to be a matter of, you know, putting it together for each of those. And that could be, I could try to incorporate that in the next PFEIS. But tonight, I actually was looking for commentary from the board, if you have anything, or just general questions that you're not seeing or not getting answers to in what you've been handed so far. If there's anything else that needs to be covered in here.
Also from Dominic and Dennis, certainly, any, you know, any specific things that you might have seen or not seen in this document that might be helpful, we'd certainly like to hear from you guys.
Yep. And I suppose, you know, if after the meeting tonight, any of the board members, or Dennis or Dominic, if you, if anybody has, you know, thoughts after this, you can always email me. I know you know my email address.
I think it would be helpful for the board to consider at the next meeting, a proposed final version of it. So to move away, you know, from, from the track changes versions, which have been helpful up to this point, but I think to have a proposed final draft for the board to consider at the August meeting.
And we always have this track changes version to refer back to if we need to.
Of course.
Yeah.
Yeah, I tried to give you both, because I don't know which is the preferred methodology. But yes. But in the final, go ahead.
Yeah, the only thing with another track changes version along with a clean version for the August meeting would be that it would make it easier for someone like me to see what further changes have been made in the further revised document. So it's pretty easy to just do a continuation of track changes, you know, building on this one, going to the next one. But I think as Dominic suggests, then really keying in on a clean version at the August meeting will be helpful to see what it's all actually going to look like as a final document or a close to final document. I think this really helped me, the track changes version, to see, especially like where comments that I know I had already seen before from you were being inserted to either supplement, refute comments and responses by the applicant, supplementing previous comments on the actual DEIS that you had made. But yeah, I think we're getting quite close now to getting towards a final, final, final FEIS.
Yeah. Final, final. The recent set of changes I've been working on will tie original DEIS comment by CPL with the response by the applicants, and then if it needs another response from CPL, that would be in bold, so. And it's only key once, it's not every one. So I think, what I want to make sure about though is, by, I think you mean, a continuous tract changes document. In other words, from, it would include sort of the cumulative of all the tract changes, and then the clean item.
Yeah, so if there's a way, I'm sure there is a way to show, all right, here are the track changes that were made for this, for lack of a better date, the July 10th Planning Board version, going on to the August 14th Planning Board version to show how the August 14th version is now different from the July 10th version. Be helpful to someone like me who struggles to get through these kind of documents to figure out.
It would be like a continuous tract changes one from several versions, so you're not having to compare.
But then along with it-
And then one clean one.
Yeah, one clean version, which is-
I thought I had always given you a clean one.
Well, you did with this one, but I just refused to even look at it because there's, I wouldn't have been able to know what was going on.
Right, and that part is being fixed, yep.
Well, I'm hoping we can get some comments from board members on specific things you might have caught or thought about. I've got a listing myself, so I'd be perfectly happy to go through sort of some of my listing now and give others sort of a little bit of time to think about any that you might want to talk about, or if there are any things on the top of your minds now. It's a good time to start.
No, I mean, I did appreciate the, next to each response where it says applicant's response, I think that's an important addition to the document, because in some cases, there's disagreement with the comment or the intent of the comment. So I noticed that throughout, and I thought, okay, that's, that's really helpful, because this is our document. So I wanted to be very clear, you know, what part of that response is ones that this board is going to agree with or accept, and where we feel like we need to comment further. So that was helpful. And I know there was the, the one comment I had made at the meeting about the traffic, and I noticed you had worked that in, I had sent some notes to you previous, so I noticed that was in. So at least related to the comment that I had, I think you captured that with your updated response. So those are kind of two things that, at least for me, right off the top that I had, so.
I have to say, I was not able to get through the whole thing.
That's understandable.
There was a lot, and there was a lot of going back and forth. And for me also, I had my, my first version, so I had it on three screens, trying to figure it all out, but, so, there are a few things, but there was one question, and I guess, it wasn't a CPL comment, so you didn't comment on it, but it's a question for maybe for Dominic also, but it's on the, it's actually on the bottom page, page 102.
Page where, say again?
Oh, the bottom page of your, of the-
102.
102 is the last page.
Right.
And it was actually Bob, I think Bob's, it was your comment, you know, the question was about economic viability. And I have a question for Dominic about this also, because the way they say it here, their answer to this was that it's not economically viable for the applicant, and it's not part of their plan. Okay, I can understand it's not part of their plan, but it says, while they're in agreement that they were not responsible to make a profit, it has been determined by municipal legislatures to be permitted, included, permitted by special permit, the planning board must evaluate the application for the use according to the criteria of zoning code. So they're basically saying that they don't want to look at a single family as an alternative, but, you know, they're saying if it's, if they're, if what they're, what they're looking for is a permitted use, but it's not a permitted use at this point.
That's correct.
So, I mean, so it's almost like-
It's a special permit.
Right, it's, yeah, it's almost like the corn and the horse are, you know, mixed up here. So I really feel that the single-family home should be looked at as an alternative. And if they say it's not economically viable, how about a rationale for that? Because, how does that work? Because for, I understand that they've, the applicant's probably invested money in this, and maybe it's become something that's not viable for them at this point, but if we go down that rabbit hole, we can make almost anything not viable if we just keep pouring money into something.
Understood, and you have to balance that, if I may, you know, with the fact that you can't compel an applicant to-
Right, no, I'm not trying to compel them.
Right.
But I'm trying to see if this is-
But even just, let me finish, like to build something that they're not planning on building. And so, you know, alternatives analysis in SEACER, and we could talk about this for a long time, you know, like when you're dealing with a municipality, municipality has power of eminent domain, they have the ability to do different things that an individual applicant does not. So alternatives analysis, when it comes to like building like a new wastewater treatment plant, and where it could go, and all of those things, like can have a lot of different options to it. But for this, like, you know, we're bound by, you know, the applicant has made a proposal, it is what they intend on doing.
Right.
You know, and the real alternative to that is what's called the no-action alternative, you know, which is, you know, that this particular project doesn't get built, the applicant still has the option to apply for something different, something that's allowed in the zoning, you know, or not. But SEACER does not include an analysis of economic viability when it comes to, you know, an applicant's project. And in fact, it tends to avoid economics altogether in many different instances, because it opens up, you know, a fiscal analysis that is not really related to environmental impacts.
But it is to the general whole thing of why we're here doing this. I understand what you're saying about environmental impact, but why they proposed it is because it's passive residual income.
Yes.
And they don't want any of the other viable possible alternatives. So there's like a woodpecker, you're just going to keep going. It's just my analysis, sorry.
No, no, I understood, I mean, that's clearly like why, why they've applied it, and they have, you know, made their arguments as to why this will be an appropriate site for that use. Clearly, you know, they've done a significant amount of analysis, but at the end of the day, you know, it's this board that has to grant the special permit in light of the criteria that are involved.
So if you're talking about the character, to me, it's like proposing to put a storage thing in the middle of the golf course. It's just because of, if you walk there, I've actually gotten out and walked up, and, you know, the houses and everything else and everything that's there, it just, I don't know, it just doesn't make sense to me, but, like you said, like you said, they can propose something, they wanted to do it, and here we are.
Well, getting back to Felix's commentary on page 2-102, the part of the applicant's response that made me think about it more was less the economic feasibility part and more what you sort of underlined, Felix, about if a use has been determined by the municipal legislature to be permitted, including permitted by special permit, the planning board must evaluate the application for that use according to the criteria of the zoning code. Well, we know there are criteria in Section 190, well, sorry, 150-19B, but no special permit has been granted yet, and the use is not permitted until and unless the board does grant that approval, before it can even consider that use a permitted use. So that part of the comment, and I put this in my margin notes, and I'm actually now thinking it should probably have a more direct response in the FEIS, specifically about, well, yeah, the planning board has not issued a special use permit for the proposed self-storage use, therefore, the self-storage use is not a permitted use until and unless the planning board issues a special use permit.
What page, can I ask?
Well, don't worry about writing it down now, it's, it's 2-102, which is what Felix was referring to. So what I'm, what I've done is, I actually have like a outline that refers to the page numbers and the sections that I think some kind of either further comment, response, or in some cases even deletion of wording would be appropriate. And I'm just now adding that one on page 2-102. So let me just write it down here.
I mean, this, the answer to this is really kind of like a puzzle that the board is going to put together, because it's, the reasoning has to make sense to the board to move forward on a SEACER findings, you know. So, I mean, honestly, any kind of thoughts you have on any of it would be helpful, you know, you're the decision makers, and, and you live here, and this is your community, so whatever thoughts you think might be off the chain, maybe they're not, because the proposal is, let's face it, it like literally flies in the face of the zoning, except that your zoning does have this provision that allows these things to be considered in the first place. Like what you were saying about the woodpecker knocking, you know.
So just kind of continue on that a little bit. Liz, can you maybe explain your comment that's on page 211 on the bottom? Because this is where-
211?
Yeah, this is where that 102, that financial, I know we can't talk about it, but they talk about the taxes for the town and the financial, the financial benefit. And can you tell me what you were trying to say in your comment?
So I, if, I want to make sure I'm in the right place.
211 is a response 11, their response 11.
Okay.
Yeah, and you were commenting on that.
Okay, let's see.
So it's the bottom of page 2-11, yeah.
Right. And this, okay, so this, what they're calling comment 11 is my, is, comment C2 was CPL's DEIS comment. And so the FEIS has to provide a response to the DEIS comment, so that's what response 11 is. And let's see, my response, hang on, I'm just going to sort of paraphrase a little bit. The response to CPL DEIS comment C2 at PFEIS comment response 11 does not pertain to the review of the proposed use under zoning Section 150-19B. Further, the response does not provide any answer for why, oh, that should be any.
Any.
Why any land, sorry about that, should provide any financial benefit specifically to the town of Fishkill that is pertinent to zoning, specifically Section 150-19B. The, the point of that is, financial benefit isn't, isn't inherent in-
Because we get tax dollars, it doesn't matter. Is that what you're saying?
No.
I don't believe there's anything in the logic of your zoning that implies that land should provide any financial benefit. I mean, the point of somebody owning a hunk of land is so they can build a house or build a business, and-
Or hold it for profit.
Or, what, and yeah, I mean, theoretically, if you're going to build apartments or any kind of industry or retail, you would hope to turn a profit, but that's a risk of doing business, as far as I've learned. And I, and I don't, and I can look again, but I don't see anything in the language of Code Chapter 150, which is your zoning, that implies that there's a financial benefit. Everybody has, no, there isn't. And everybody has an opportunity to try to make a financial gain, but, but within the bounds of what you're allowed to do.
You know, but on that point, I mean, 150-19B, which has the criteria that the board has to evaluate, doesn't include, you know, criteria that says that, you know, that the property is going to generate, you know, taxes for the town, for instance, you know.
So on the subject-
It's a point that the, you know, the applicant would make, you know.
That's what I'm trying to say, that's the point that the applicant's making, right?
Right.
The point that, the point that they're making?
Is that if it's not developed, it generates le- Is that if it's not developed, it generates less-
Yeah.
It's less.
Right. So almost if like, we don't do anything with it, it's hurting the town somehow. Because it's generating less revenue for the town.
And you mean if-
If you make your land, we get less money as a town.
Right.
Sure.
But this should have nothing to do with whether it's approved or what, what goes on top of the land.
Because there are so many-
It's gonna be there regardless.
Right. And there are so many alternatives available. I mean, if you sit and look at the zoning district it's in, the uses that could be done in that zoning district, um, and then the logic of your zoning allows that, let's say, if you're in a restricted business zoning district, you can do certain uses in the zoning district that is less restrictive or that is more restrictive than restrictive business, which means uses that are lighter and not as business-like. So, and, and that's the progression of your zoning. That's another big comment in here. I wish I could just find it. But it, it talks about the, the logic of the progression is that, um, so for example, if you're in, if you're in a restricted business zoning district, you can also do uses that are in the, um, LHC district, the historic district, because those are not as intensive as what is allowed in restricted business zoning. So there's a progression, and I, I know I explained it in one of the comments in there that talks about, um-
I think it's probably in a couple of places, yeah.
Yeah, I think it is. And, and you can kind of see it if you look at a zoning, the non-residential zoning district table, um, you know, the big pullouts that you have, get the non-residential one. And by example, look at restricted business, and it'll tell you a bunch of uses. And then there'll be a line near the bottom that says, and any of the uses allowed. And so it, it allows you, you do these things, they're a little more intensive, but all those easier ones or lighter ones, you can do those too. And it progresses that way, all the way through, pretty much.
But that has nothing to do with tax dollars.
It doesn't. It just means you have a lot of options. If you have a chunk of land or you're thinking of buying a chunk of land in the town of Fishkill, these are all the different options for how you can use that piece of land. And whether you make money on it or not, isn't, isn't, there's no-
He was asking a question.
Okay. Am I, I'm not answering it, am I?
Yeah, that's okay. I think, yeah, we've gone through it. But I was just questioning the way that their answer was given and how we were answering that back. Because, you know, the way they were answering it, it's almost like accord, it even says at the end there, accordingly, the financial benefit to the, to the town of Fishkill or expected benefit from resulting development can be relevant to the lead agency's decision-making. That's what they're saying. I think, I, I, I don't agree with that. I think, uh-
Also, maybe we can put a response there.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying. I think we may need to respond to that a little bit.
So this, the response, the CPL response could be res-
Yes.
Expanded?
I think so.
Okay, okay, that's helpful. Okay, it's too short. All right, that's helpful.
One major area of concern to me is this whole section, and I'll give you the page reference in a second, on pages two dash fifty-one through two dash sixty-four, which is where the references to meeting the criteria, the four criteria of section one fifty nineteen B occurs. And, there it is. I paper clipped it and made a reference on my index sheet to the need for us to make sure we really go through that. And I think you made reference to this earlier, Liz. But I really didn't have the time to try to write language. But there are, the applicant spends much time making arguments about how the applicant believes they are meeting virtually all four of the criteria in one fifty nineteen B. And I think we really need to add some responses to the applicant's responses in a number of places within those pages that refute that, um, because I think there are a lot of comments by the applicant that are obviously, um, well, we could use the word bias because it probably is biased towards the applicant's position. Um, and yet there are no responses from us, from CPL in that whole-
Got it.
In that whole area. So, um, I think probably what we need to do is, board members need to take a look at, in particular, those pages where we could add some significant commentary and responses.
What pages are those, John? Again, fifty-one to sixty-four?
Two dash fifty-one through two dash sixty-four. So there's a lot of stuff in there. And it's, it's all four of the sections, um, nineteen B, sections one A through one D is-
It's, yeah.
Regarding substantial-
It's two dash fifty through?
Two dash fifty-one through two dash sixty-four.
It starts at the bottom of two dash fifty on mine?
All right, well, maybe that's the, um-
Yeah, that's what it started.
All right.
On mine, it starts at the top of two dash fifty-one.
The header says zoning code section one fifty.
But it's, it's that header, yes.
Right. It says one fifty dash nineteen B, one A, and then-
Yeah.
Okay. And then there's a section for each of them. Okay.
So I think that's gonna be a really important one. And I'd be perfectly happy to either maybe, maybe Liz will do a Microsoft Teams meeting or something to kind of put our heads together and come up with some specific-
Okay.
Responses to the applicant's responses. Um, because I think that's gonna be a key area that we're really gonna need to focus on.
And I have a feeling that, um, early in, in this process, way before we got to the point of EIS, um, I did write a lot about each of those points. And, you know, could probably go back to that.
Yeah, it may be something where we can just clip and repeat certain comments in certain areas that really get to the core of that.
Yep. So that section, okay, on mine, it goes from two dash fifty through two dash sixty-four, so.
And I think, as I said at the last meeting, um, we have to remember that the planning board must make all four of the findings in section one fifty nineteen B to approve a special permit to allow the self-storage use.
Yep.
And even if one of those criteria cannot be met, then the proposed use should be determined to not be permitted.
Yep. I think I would like to go back to some of the original stuff when we were first starting to review this for each of those sections.
And I think-
And start from there in the library.
The, um, a further discussion of that could take place in the finding statement.
Absolutely, yeah. That's probably gonna be narrowed down much more than this, or hopefully. The finding statement should be really keyed in on what the decision is gonna be.
Correct.
Rather than going through each and every topic from the original draft environmental impact statement. That's what I found interesting. And for any people out there watching this still, um, this whole, this project has been under review by the board for quite a while now. And it goes back to the draft environmental impact statement that was completed and public comments were received on that draft environmental impact statement, um, late last year, I guess it was.
It's been a long time, yeah.
And so this is now the second or third iteration of a draft final environmental impact statement, which basically is just incorporating all of the substantive public comments and agency comments on the draft environmental impact statement into a final environmental impact statement. And so that's where we are now, trying to figure out how to wrap up the final environmental impact statement, accept it, and then move on to the planning board's own finding statement, which will really be the basis of our decision. So let me just real quickly run through my index list. And some of these are, um, just kind of minor, um, in some cases even suggested deletions. So I, I, this is really possible strikeout deletions, additions to responses, and in some cases, margin comments that might be taken into consideration, one way or the other. Um, so this goes through ranging from things like page two dash eight, comment nine. And if, if you can't find it quickly, that's okay. I'm just doing this as a quick example thing of what, what I'm coming up with. Um, there's a suggested deletion, which basically is just striking some wording that the applicant's response has that I didn't think would be appropriate. And so-
Is it, is it shown, okay, so it's shown as added language?
Well, so-
In response nine?
Um, it's actually, this one in particular is, let's see, page two dash eight. In response nine, right. And it's dealing with noise and air quality impacts. And the part of this sentence has to do with, um, the distinct distinguishing factor between the proposed project and the town's three other already developed RB zoned areas is the limited traffic that would be generated by the proposed project, which then the applicant went on to say, which would correspondingly reduce noise and air quality impacts as compared to other developed and permitted uses in the RB district. And then it refers to DEIS table two three, where there was a comparison of various different uses.
And that's an added chunk of language, right?
It's the applicant's-
Applicant's added.
Response. And I'm suggesting deleted part of the applicant's response.
Okay.
So I have, I didn't, I didn't do it on Word Strike Through. I did it in my version of hard copy. So what I'm gonna do is hand this over to you, Liz. And it's got a cover sheet with an index of where all these things are, what they are. Some are deletions, like this one. Some are additional responses that I think need to be added. And I'll, I'll read a couple of them, too, for examples.
Okay.
A couple of them are just minor edits even. So I, you know, I did some editing where there were misspellings or typos or whatever, too. But, um, let's see. One of them, I think, is gonna be really important. So this one is on page two dash thirty-nine. Hopefully, that's the same page number that you'll have.
Well, if you start reading, I'll find it. But I'll find it in there.
It's, let's see. It's, it's suggested-
Is it comment D nine?
Wait, 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 wait.
Okay.
It's response twenty-nine. This is where I started getting confused between-
It's okay.
Comment twenty-nine, response twenty-nine. Well, it's in the response. It's in the applicant's response.
Yep, I put that, yeah, I tried to.
And it's regarding, it's refuting the building inspector zoning administrators advisory opinion regarding substantial similarity pursuant to section one fifty nineteen B. So it's Joel Petrus's memo that he submitted, which is part of the draft environmental impact statement and the final environmental one. Oh, actually, no, it was, it was in the final only, I think. Anyway, whatever. But, um, I'm suggesting addition of a response that will, that, it actually comes from some other notes that I'd taken. So it's, I'm just inserting this into that page, um, where, and it's based on comments I made at the June twelfth planning board meeting, I think it was, the last meeting, where I referred to several incorrect or incomplete, um, wording from, from Joel. And it has to do with, um, his statement that restricted business has several permitted principal uses, which would all cause much more impact in the location of the proposed self-storage facility.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Then I go, then I go on to say why that's not accurate. Then it has, um, his second statement, where the amount of traffic in and out of the self-storage area would have the least impact of all the uses allowed, which in turn would lessen the adverse impact on the health, safety, and welfare. Oh, that's incorrect, because there are uses like one-family dwellings, small subdivisions, small tourist home, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, that would actually have less impact. So, and then there's statement number three, all of the above make the use consistent with the stated purpose of the districts.
Yep.
Unfortunately, Joel never mentioned what the purpose of the RB district is.
Right, yeah.
So I go on, on that one. So it's simply a matter of refuting things-
Right.
That are repeated by the applicant that either are incorrect, um, not complete, or misleading, in my opinion. So that's, that's an example-
Okay.
Of where that comes in. Let's see, where, what page is that? So I can put it back in there.
I, I, I was looking at two, page two dash thirty-eight.
Yep, two thirty-eight.
And then it's on italics, and it continues to the top of two dash thirty-nine. Does that sound right, Felix?
Yep, two thirty-eight.
Two dash thirty-nine.
And I kind of flagged it.
Yeah, 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 I got it.
Anyway, while you were talking.
I got it. Um, so I don't wanna spend a lot more time. There's things like that. There are some big ones, like that whole twelve, thirteen-page section regarding all the, all the criteria.
I would make a copy of that and make, you know-
So I'll, I'll loan it to you.
Get yours back to you.
Yeah, then you can get it back to me. And then we can, especially with that, that long section where there were no CPL comments inserted, we can figure out if there are some in other areas.
The points, the four points, yeah.
Yeah, the four criteria, the four findings that the planning board has to make, which the applicant goes through in a lot of detail of why they think all the criteria should be determined to be met. And that may or may not be true. So we need to figure that out.
Yep.
But like Dominick says, the real key place for those findings will be in a finding statement.
Yep.
Looks like some of you are getting wasted and drained by all this. So I think we should probably move on to our last item, but-
If you could go to sleep now, you could go to sleep.
But good, good job of, um, reassembling the draft FEIS. And I think-
I wish it had been a better job and more coherent for the board, but.
Yeah. So I see the applicant has stepped up to the podium. Would you like to make some comments or have any questions?
Yeah, just wanna make one suggestion. So if we're targeting the August meeting to adopt the FEIS, what the regulations say is that the finding statement then has to be adopted within thirty days of the FEIS's filing, which would then leave the September meeting for this board to adopt the finding statement. Um, so I would just think about maybe preparing a draft to also consider at the next meeting, so that you, it could be adopted within thirty days by September. Just trying to compress the timeline, you know, it's-
Yeah, and, and a way to compress the timeline is to hand over a revised preliminary final environmental impact statement to the board two weeks before the meeting, and then immediately turn around and start-
Yeah.
Writing a findings.
Yeah, so I think you had sort of that kind of a timeline. Yeah, so I think you had sort of that kind of a timeline figured out.
I was kind of, yeah, thinking, I had specifically thought about the timeline, but I knew that as soon as a revised FEIS was handed over to the board, that it was time to immediately start working on the findings. In this case, we still need to do this.
So, let's see, can you, oh, sorry, pass that down to Liz. And then, yeah, we can, we can specifically talk more, Liz, and then any other board members who might have more specific comments or responses to add, can get directly in touch with Liz.
And I would, I'll want to make a copy and then get this back to you.
All right.
So you're not missing your notes. But I won't be around tomorrow and Monday, so if I don't-
Oh, that's fine. Don't worry.
What else?
Just on procedure, trying to keep it moving.
Yep.
Do we need a motion basically authorizing CPL to prepare a further revised chapter two of the revised, of the draft FEIS, or should we just assume that?
I think it's underway.
Yeah? Don't need it, okay. Um, okay. Certainly a lot to go through.
Yes.
And we do actually appreciate the effort of the applicant to, you know, put the original FEIS together in a, in a format that will work. It's just that we don't necessarily agree with all of the positions that the applicant has, but that's, that's the way this proposal has been going down the road, so to speak, down Route ninety.
Right, yeah, and we understand, we're just interested in wrapping it up.
Yeah.
Sure.
Well, thanks, thanks, we appreciate your coming to hear all this, and hopefully we'll be in a better position at the next meeting.
And to your comment, I'd, I'd be willing to bet good money that the board is probably interested in wrapping this thing up too.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Great, well, see you in August.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so, what, oh, the last item on the agenda is a closed session for the board to seek advice from the planning board attorney. So, yeah, so what we will need is a motion to enter a closed session, we'll need to clear the room, which I think is now cleared, and suspend the broadcast and taping. Yeah, we, I don't think, unless you want to stay, Dennis, I don't think we need you to stay. And Liz, I think you can, you can go home and get some rest.
Sure.
And I don't believe that there's any action for the board to take-
No.
Coming out of the session, so it's not as though the board is going to reconvene later tonight and there's, there's no further action. This is solely an attorney-client discussion.
Right. So based on that, we will give the AV room the opportunity to shut things down.
Yes?
Can we let him go?
Yeah. I believe so, yeah.
Because there's nothing else after this.
That's good, because we were-
Yeah. The only thing we'll do is come back into open session and adjourn.
All I have to do is tell them when that is, and that's fine.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Thank you, my glasses.
So, thanks, Dennis, and thanks, Liz.
Thank you all.
So is there a motion to enter closed session?
Yes.
Second and first.
Did Fred move it?
Yeah.
And Bob seconded it? Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? All right. Dominic?